Good morning, everybody. Today is July 9th, 2024. This is our regular board meeting for the Lake County Board of Supervisors. We will begin today with a moment of silence, and I have not checked in with all of my colleagues. Does anyone have a moment of silence?
No.
So I'll mention two things. One, I've been gone for a while, but I've been keeping track of things that have been happening. I know there have been multiple fires in the area, including one that was about 500 feet from my house. Not necessarily a moment of silence, but a moment of thanks to all of our first responders who are acting quickly in order to try and prevent loss and protect our, not just the people, but their homes and all the buildings in the area. It's been good to read about the action that has been taken, and just I'm very thankful for all the action. And also want to hold a moment of silence for those right now that are being hit by the hurricane in Texas. A lot of people are without power, and a lot of people are going to need a lot of help out there as well. And we know what that's like going through tragedy here ourselves. So if we can have a moment of silence for them. Vice Chair Crandall, if you would please lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Item number four, consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. Are there any extra items?
We have no extra items.
All right, and nothing from board members as well. We'll move on to item five, approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items that board members wish to pull? So I'm going to be pulling item 5.16. That one will come back at a later time, so not for further discussion. And let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Anyone from the public wish to pull an item from the consent agenda?
I know you probably didn't get Elisa's email, but I wanted to pull 7.8 and bring it back next week. I want, yeah, 7.8.
So not from the consent agenda, but?
Oh, yeah, from the other agenda.
Okay, we'll get to that, and we'll go ahead and let people know that we'll be moving on from that one.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Everything on the consent for behavioral health is still good. Anything else from the public? See, no one getting up in the chamber and no hands in Zoom, so bringing it back to the board for action.
Move to approve the consent agenda, as posted with the exception of item 5.16.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we will move on. I see that Sheriff Howe was on camera. I'm going to take up public input and pet of the week, and then if maybe he does want to speak on the item that was just pulled. And so we'll get to that as soon as possible. So let's go ahead and move on to public input, our 9:02 a.m. This is for anyone from the public to use three minutes to express themselves to the Board of Supervisors on anything not related to an agenda item. Please come on up if you wish to speak for public input. See no one in the chamber and no hands up in Zoom. So we'll go ahead and close down public input, and we will move on to pet of the week. And we have Officer Murray. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Officer Murray with the Lake County Animal Care and Control. And this morning, I have brought with me Rocky. He is a three-year-old Australian cattle mix or Australian cattle dog. And he is an absolute lover boy. He just wants attention from everybody. We have tested him with other dogs, and he does great. We have not tested him with cats, so we're not too sure how he does with them yet. But I do really think he would do well with any type of household. So if you would like to come down and meet this super, super sweet boy or any of our other animals at the shelter, we can be found at 4949 Helbus Drive, or you can give us a call at 707-263-0278. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Officer Murray. Good luck, Rocky. All right, let's go ahead and see if Sheriff Howe wanted to speak on item 5.16. A, approved purchase of two 2025 Ford Explorer Police Pursuit Vehicles from Napa Ford Lincoln in the amount not to exceed $104,000 from the Sheriff Pursuit Replacement Budget Unit 2217, object code 62.72, and B, authorize the sheriff coroner or his designated sign the purchase order. Good morning, Sheriff Howe.
Good morning. Yeah, it was brought to my attention that the purchase order was not included in this agenda item. It wasn't technically agenda-ready. It's our fault, I apologize. So I'd like to carry that over or bring it back at a later date.
Okay, and I'm sure we can accommodate that to come as soon as possible so we can get you those pursuit vehicles.
Perfect.
Thank you very much. So we'll go ahead and table that, and we'll still open it up for public comment. And I see no hands in Zoom and no one getting up, and we will see that coming in future agendas. Thank you again. Let's go ahead and move on to our 9:05 a.m. item, sitting concurrently as the CSA Number Two Board of Supervisors and Lake County Sanitation District Board of Directors. Consideration of resolution revising the fiscal year 2324 adopted budget of the County of Lake, authorizing cancellation of Fund 254 Lake County Sanitation District's Southeast Regional Operation and Maintenance Reserve Account in the amount of $2 million to provide a short-term loan to County Service Area Number Two, Spring Valley.
Good morning, Board and Chairman. This is, I'm Robyn Boy with your new special districts administrator. I have two of my staff here with me, Scott Horning and Jessie, for any technical questions related to this item.
Before you continue, would you like to come and sit on the chairs up front?
Oh, okay.
Make yourself comfortable.
So the item before you is a short-term loan to basically allow for cash flow. We have a grant-funded bridge project for $6.1 million. It's already been awarded, and it's fully funded 100% by the HBR program through Caltrans. The Department of Public Works is actually delivering the project for us. And this loan is a $2 million loan just to allow us to continue to pay the contractor just for a cash flow basis, because we have to expend the funds before we can get reimbursed. So we will, you know, pay the contractor, then seek reimbursement, pay the contractor, seek reimbursement. And so we expect the loan to be for one year, and that's just to basically allow for the cash flow of the project, and then we will return the funds to fund balance.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments regarding this item? So I have some questions. Last I saw, and I have it right here, there's $2.2 million or approximately in the reserves for the O&M in Southeast, looking to pull $2 million for the project. Definitely want the project to continue and move forward. I do have concerns that it's a maximum of 12 months. That doesn't tell me if we would get reimbursed in three months, if we get reimbursed in six months. Do you have a timeline of what the state reimbursement process looks like?
So the way HBR works, you can submit one progress invoice per month. So it depends on how, if Public Works does them once a month or if they do them quarterly. It's usually based on how much money you have out if you submit them. And then Caltrans usually pays within two to three weeks. And so it's a continuous thing.
And the timeline for the project, because obviously if the project takes the full 12 months, then that'll be 12 months' worth of billing to get the reimbursements.
I'm not sure if we know the length of the project, but I would expect that the bridge would go in pretty quickly.
Okay. So some of my concerns is, for example, we just had to borrow money from, I don't know if it was specifically O&M, but we just had to borrow money from reserves in order to do the other project that's happening on Bayless and Alvita in the Southeast Treatment Plant Infrastructure. There's definitely some other concerns. I'm not going to call them issues. It's just concerns for that infrastructure that there may be some needs. It goes down to 228. I believe the year before, we spent about $800,000 or something along those lines out of the reserves in order to do some operation and maintenance. And because it's an enterprise fund, the reserves get interest from the investment portfolio that we have. And here, we would be taking away the reserves, which would take away that enterprise fund's interest rate that it would receive to help keep accumulating more funds. Again, I do not want to stop this project. I want to, my ultimate goal would be to try and reduce the amount of timeline, because if it's 12 months, that means that's a whole year that there's only $228,000 available for operation and maintenance and reserves for anything needed in Southeast. Southeast covers all of Lower Lake and all of the city of Clear Lake, so it's quite a large area with potential, any issues that can occur during the entirety of the 12 months. So I just have concerns to reduce the reserves to that low without the ability to refill it as quickly as it could.
The Bayless project's covered from the capacity expansion reserves. That comes from our CAPBs. The Bayless project, that's covered by the capacity expansion reserves. Those are covered by our CAPBs. And then, we don't anticipate it'll take the 12 months. We should be able to get the reimbursement quickly. Like I said, Robyn mentioned, it takes about a month to submit it, a couple of weeks to get it back. And we do intend on paying it back quicker than the 12 months.
Would it be possible to reduce the 12 months to a different number? Or is that just uncomfortable?
I would say that that would probably be uncomfortable. But this is going to be a continuous, ongoing reimbursement that's going to be coming through. So we may be out $500,000, and then three weeks from now, we'll be back. We'll have all the funding back. It just depends on how fast the reimbursements are submitted, which we can, you know, work with the Public Works Department and make sure that they're submitted on a timely, monthly basis on this project to make sure that we don't deplete all of the funds. It's strictly a cash flow thing. When you're doing a big project like this, it could easily, one progress invoice could be $2 million. And we don't want to impact the general fund by having the general fund float that until we get reimbursed. So, and it'll, you know, just be coming back in every single time the invoice comes out. So, and we do have our operating budget for anything that comes up. And so, you know, if something comes up, we can, you know, come back and look at this or if we run into other issues.
Okay. I know we also had the conversation about the CSA Number Two with new rates in the Prop 218. I believe CSA Two was involved in that. Would that help to recover the operation maintenance needs for future things, like future projects such as this?
So that's strictly for the water, for the water?
The water side?
Spring Valley.
Gotcha. So I'll just make the statement that I'm uncomfortable with moving forward, so I just wanted to at least express my concerns and so that it's understood as to why. I would love to look at a different way to get you the $2 million than taking away from something that I'm very concerned that needs to have that reserve there, especially that there's going to be a loss in the interest that will be received from our investment, and there's not any recoupment of that loss whatsoever within the contract or the agreement that we have here today. Anything further? Let's open it up.
What amount of interest are you thinking it's going to affect?
I mean, I know, I know that we get about 4% interest right now, I believe is what we're at on our investment portfolio. So 4% of $2 million would be $40,000, $50,000, something along those lines, I don't know. But I know that it's a very large system. And again, I don't know of specific issues, but I do have concerns of the status of the system and the needs of the system. And bringing it down to $228,000 just increases my concerns. And I know we have, I mean, I hate to put it out there, but we have contingency funds. We have other reserves that are available to help out with that $2 million rather than taking it away from another enterprise fund. So again, I want to make sure this project happens. That is not my goal is to stop it, but I'm concerned where we're taking the money from.
Do you think it would be proper to ask, like, either Patrick or Chandler Assets? If that's, like, if that fits? You know what I mean? I understand your concern, but they manage the portfolio, work really intimately with it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I don't know if they can, you know, have any input on it, but I mean, I just would feel more comfortable. I mean, not discrediting what you're saying. Would just like to, if that's the case, you know? But I'm comfortable with moving forward.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. Let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. See no hands up in the Zoom room and no one moving in the chamber. Bringing it back to the board for action.
I offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Nay. Thank you very much. And we are at 9:19. Let's go ahead. We have behavioral health in the back. If you don't mind, we'll take at least one of your items right now. 7.3, consideration of agreement between County of Lake and California Psychiatric Transitions for acute inpatient psychiatric hospital services, inpatient competency restoration services, and professional services associate with acute inpatient psychiatric hospitalization in the amount of $350,000 for fiscal year 2425. Ms. Andrus.
So yes, this is inpatient psychiatric services. This is one of the facilities we use to try to?
Closer to the mic. Super sensitive.
This is one of our facilities that we send people to, to out of the jail, to regain competency, to stand trial. It is nonrefundable. It's something that we have to pay out of realignment dollars. But unfortunately, it's a facility we need.
Okay. Any questions or comments? I know that's been a big, huge conversation of the incompetent stand trial, so appreciate that we have part of a solution, maybe not overall solution. Let's go ahead and open it up for public comment on this item. I see no hands in Zoom, no one moving in the chamber. Oh, Joan, please come on up, Joan. Thank you.
Joan Moss, I'm a citizen. I've visited inmates who are incarcerated, and I want to know if the inmates are given a reading test. I believe that some of these inmates are not competent readers. And if they can't read, how can they understand a trial? Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I don't know that the incompetent to stand trial is related to literacy competency. I don't know if you wanted to respond to that.
Yeah, no, this is completely mental health.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Thank you for your comment. I didn't see anyone else wishing to come up. And so we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Chair.
Please.
Just a follow-up question. So it looks like it went to RFQ. So we're not extending a prior contract? This is a new contract?
This is a new contract, yes.
Okay. And nobody else responded to the RFQ? Or you just kind of did a one-off for this particular specialty provider?
I, I couldn't actually answer that, but we only have two facilities that can do it. And if anything, they were both RFQ, and we have a contract with the other facility as well.
But we weren't on contract with these guys before?
We were, yeah. Every year, we've been on contract with them.
So the prior contract is sunsetting?
Yeah, July, June 30th, it probably expired. So we currently have two clients there. So this would be for this fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
Looking for action.
Move to approve the agreement between the County of Lake and California Psychiatric Transitions for acute inpatient psychiatric hospital services, inpatient competency restoration services, and professional services associated with acute inpatient psychiatric hospitalization in the amount of $350,000 for fiscal year 202425, and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Go ahead and keep going. 7.4, consideration of amendment number two to the agreement between County of Lake and Crestwood Behavioral Health for Adult Residential Support Services and Specialty Mental Health Services in the amount of $1.32 million for fiscal years 2223, 2324, and 2425. Even though, just as a clarification, the 1.32 is specifically for 2425, as the other two were 1.2 million apiece. Am I correct on that?
Yes, I believe so. I didn't have time to pull up the other contracts to look at them. I'm sorry. They, and they did increase their rates on us this fiscal year.
And I'm just scrolling down to the bottom of the rates. Yeah, and it does say 1.2 for 2223, 1.2 for 2324, and 1.32 for 2425.
Yeah.
Just didn't want it to be read as if that was a total amount for all three years. If you wanted to introduce the items, sorry.
Sorry. So again, this is Crestwood Behavioral Health. They have multiple facilities of different levels of care that we have multiple conserved clients, conserved by the County of Lake that are placed at these facilities at different levels of care.
Okay. Any comments or questions? So I have a bit of an issue with this item. In the original agreement, it said that the rates would not increase by more than 3.5%. We signed a three-year contract. And now in the First Amendment, nothing changed other than the rates were updated, but it was still 1.2 million. The original agreement was for 3.6 for all three fiscal years. And then this last agreement, it now changed that it will have no more than 10% increase from year to year, which kind of, I get it. We're in between a rock and a hard place. But at the same time, what's the purpose of a three-year contract if we're going to see that change from 3.5 to 10%? So that's my one issue is we, we signed something, and it's completely changed. And I don't know if there were any negotiations or if they just gave us something and we went with it. But I would really like to renegotiate if possible. But also, the agreement on number two, I believe, and I'll ask our county council, it's only amending Exhibit B, which is the fiscal provisions, but it's increasing it from the original 3.6 million, which on first page of the agreement would be under compensation, to 3.72 million. And I think we need to add that within the amendment that we're changing the total compensation for all three fiscal years to be not to exceed 3.72.
Yes, that is, yes, that is correct.
Is that something that we can do on the fly through an amendment?
It could be done through an amendment. It would be an amendment to Section 3 of the agreement, the compensation provision, changing that amount from 3.6 to, as you stated, 3.72, I believe.
Okay. Any further comments or questions from board members? Let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this item? I see no hands in Zoom and no one getting up in the chamber. And for two reasons. One, because of the massive change within the 3.5 to 10, but also increasing a contract amount that we had already approved, 3.6, and without the understanding of where we are financially with behavioral health, makes me concerned to increase what was already pre-approved. The last one is something that we've already been doing and we're continuing, but here, we're seeing an increase. And I don't have enough information to know what our financial status is for reimbursements to agree. So I'm going to abstain from my vote today just because I don't have enough information to say yes or no. And I hope that we can get that monthly report to get an idea of where we are. Last I heard, which things could have changed, because it's been a while since we've had a meeting, but last I heard, yes, things were trickling in, but the number was still getting bigger as far as what the state owed us, and that, that leaves me very concerned. So just wanted to at least express the reason for my vote today. But we are back to the board for action.
Quick follow-up question. I look at the original agreement, under 4.4, it said the maximum daily rate could be increased up at 3.5% per year. And then I think I saw in the amendment contract, we're increasing it by 10% for this latter year.
Right, and that's what he was saying. And I don't have the letter that Crestwood in front of me, the letter that they sent. So I would have to look at that and bring that information back.
And I believe it's also retroactive to the 2324 rates, if I read that correctly?
And that could be possible. What happened is they didn't increase the rates last fiscal year. So now they're increasing them this fiscal year on us. So I would have to, like I said, look at the letter and see why they increased them on us.
Okay, thank you. Could we bring, could we bring that back?
That's what I'm thinking, is that if we could just bring this whole item back and so that we can make, also make the corrections that need to be made in it, and then bring it back with clarification.
If that's the will of the board? Getting consensus on that?
Okay.
All right.
There's no time urgency to this?
No.
Thank you.
And if you don't mind, just so I can be respectful of the timed items, you have a couple more, but I'll get back to you as soon as we can.
Okay, thanks.
We're going to go on to item 6.4, our 9:25 a.m. hearing. Consideration of request for post-abatement hearing on account and proposed assessment of abatement. 3025 Spring Valley Road, Clear Lake Oaks, APN 06233104. Property owners Misty Doig and Timothy Holbrook. And we have Director Turner and Code Enforcement Staff. Good morning.
Good morning. Mariah Turner, Community Development Director. Having spatial manipulation issues at the moment.
Good.
Marcus, do you have a PowerPoint?
Yes, I do.
Excellent. It'll just be a moment. But in the meantime, we did note a typographical error. Thank you for contacting us about that. And so what you have before you is the corrected invoice sheet. And I'll turn it over to Code Enforcement Manager Marcus Beltramo. It'll just be a moment so we can get the PowerPoint presentation set up. Ready?
All right, if you're here for this appeal and you're going to speak, then you need to be sworn in. So if you could stand and raise your right hand. Okay. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? All right, thank you.
Good morning to the board. My name is Marcus Beltramo. I'm the manager of the Code Enforcement Division for Lake County. I'm the manager of the Code Enforcement Division for Lake County. Today...
Excuse me, Chair.
Yes.
Quickly, I didn't see if the appellants were present to be sworn.
I highly doubt they'll be here.
Thank you.
Okay. And they didn't raise their hand.
We did send a letter out, but a lot of the mail was returned because it went to a Santa Rosa address. Their property that they were staying at is this address here, and we did make phone calls, but the communication is, we call them, they leave a voicemail, and nothing transpires after that. All right. Today, we're here for a hearing in account of a proposed assessment, a lien hearing for 3025 Spring Valley Road, Clear Lake Oaks, California. As always, we kind of provide a map to give a context of the area in which the property is located. Property owners, again, for the record, Misty Doig and Timothy Holbrook. The property is zoned, or has a zoning designation of SR for suburban reserve, and the lot type, it is a vacant lot with no improvements on it. So we received complaints about people moving, living in trailers and moving property onto a vacant lot. The property does not have a house. Storage on the property is not allowed, and living in a recreational vehicle is against county code as well as it doesn't meet minimum construction standards. Here are the photos that we took of what was occurring on the property. As you can see, there's a recreational vehicle, a long trailer, and then a small trailer in front, a truck, and miscellaneous debris and rubbish and garbage on the ground. Here's a side view here. Just for the record, this is a, we did come in front of the board and provide a report of a summary abatement in the past on this one, although it was voluntarily abated. As you can see, miscellaneous stuff scattered all over the property. They set up solar panels with electric, that's unpermitted electrical. Again, the electric was on the ground. At the time, we believe that created a fire risk as the wires were not coated or in a conduit or sealed or underground. The wire was actually exposed and on the ground. Here's just some pictures kind of reflecting that prior statement. The solar panels were propped up on propane tanks. There was a lot of different type of electrical that was not up to code or not safe. The right picture is another example of power protectors and cords being plugged in. They were using a car battery as a power source. Again, here's those photos of those wires. On the left, you can see trash, tires were on the property, piles of trash. On the left, it's not all trash, some of those are clothes and miscellaneous items that are bagged up. Here is the trailer. This property went through stages, I guess you could say. They started on the left side of the property, we got involved, they moved the trailer to the right side of the property, and then for some reason, they stripped and took the tires and the axles off the trailer, and they gutted the inside. Looks like a pretty nice trailer and in pretty good condition. More pictures of what's going on out there. The truck, the truck was not part of any abatement that was removed, but as you can see on the left picture, there is a truck with the tires off. For some reason, they were taking tires off and on throughout the process here. Just some more pictures kind of stating what was occurring on the property. So we issued a notice of nuisance and an order to abate. We also did issue a notice of violation, but this hearing is germane to a lien on a property, which in order to abate is the mechanism prior to recording a lien on a property. We cited several violations of the Lake County Code. We cited Article 1, actually, that should be Chapter 13, Article 2. It's unlawful for any person owning, occupying, renting, managing, or controlling any real property in the county to cause or permit any weeds, dead trees, or brush to accumulate on said property, or to place, or cause, or permit any rubbish, or other refuse to be accumulate, or remain on any real property in the county on trailers and vehicles. We also cited violations of Lake County Code, Chapter 13, Article 1, Section 13-3.1E5. Any use of land, buildings, or premises established, operated, or maintained contrary to the provisions of Chapter 5, 13, and 21. Just for, I'll go into the other sections, but Code Enforcement, when they cite any violations of Chapter 5, which is the building code, or violations of Chapter 21, which is the zoning ordinance, Code Enforcement utilizes this code section in Chapter 13 as it gives us the authority to cite violations. So we cite that, and then what we do, because it is a broad code, we cite the specific violation in Chapter 5 and Chapter 21. So it's very clear to the property owners and the people in violation or in noncompliance what the issue is, and our notices do need to be clear as to what the violations are. So those correlating or corresponding sections in Chapter 5, we've cited violations of the Fire Code for all electrical equipment, wiring, devices, and appliances shall be tested and listed and labeled and installed, used, and maintained in accordance with the California Electrical Code instructions included as part of such listing. Chapter 5, we cited another section of the Fire Code. Conditions that constitute an electrical shock or fire hazard shall be abated. Again, I cited another section of Chapter, in Chapter 5, under the Fire Code. Electrical wiring, devices, equipment, and appliances that are modified or damaged and constitute electrical shock or fire shall not be used until repaired or placed in accordance with the California Electrical Code. Again, we cited another section of Chapter 5 under the Fire Code, again, for open junction boxes, open wiring splices shall be prohibited, approved cover shall be provided for all switch and electrical outlet boxes. Then we cited a section under Chapter 21, that's the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, for use of the property contrary to 21. Basically, they're using the property not in compliance with the zoning designation. And then we cited Chapter 21, Article 68, and accessory uses of structures of residential, those uses and structures customer incidentally subordinate. So they had accessory uses, like storage on the property, storage as an accessory use, and we didn't feel it met the primary zoning, the purpose of the primary zoning designation. So those are the violations that we cited in our notice. They didn't take the actions required. We had to move in, we had to abate. As we were going through this, the complaints started to ramp it up. So as we went in, we got one complaint, we got on there, complaints just started to keep coming continuously through this process. So the people in Spring Valley let their voices be heard, we heard them, and we bumped this up to a priority to go ahead and abate it, to relieve those frustrations in the community and bring the property back to a compliant state. These photos here are photos of the abatement when everything was removed. So the trash, the rubbish, that was all removed. That small trailer that you saw, they actually towed that off to a property across the street, parked it in that driveway. The trailer had to be towed off, so we had to have a flatbed loaded up on the trailer and take it to a yard. I also want to add that we did reach out to the trailer, we did identify a lender. It was Redwood Credit Union. We did reach out to them, let them know that we did have property that they had an interest in. We notified them, gave them the opportunity to come out and retrieve the property after we took it and stored it. They chose not to retrieve the collateral of the property, so we had to store it for two months there and allow the property owners the ability to retrieve the property. The property abatement itself was 1,650. The trailer tow was $1,565. Storage cost was $1,000 for a total cost of $4,215. The memo, the two and the one were transposed or they were flipped, so that was a correction that needed to be made, and that's why we provided you with the new updated task sheet reflecting those costs. Administrative costs amounted to $995.80, the total cost of the abatement, and the lien that we're requesting to be attached to the property and recorded with the Recorder's Office is $5,210.80, should be $5,215.80. So we recommend that the board approve a lien in the amount of $5,215.80, and do direct staff to record a lien against the property with the Lake County Recorder's Office. At that time, that ends our presentation, and we're open to questions or comments.
I'm sorry if I just missed that. I was trying to go through some of the numbers. Explain the 15, the $5 fee for the...
So the actual contractor costs, let me pull this up here.
Because I have $995.80 for administrative costs and $4,215, that equals $4,200 and $5,210.80.
Oh, I apologize, I misspoke.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Sorry, I'm nearsighted, not farsighted. I apologize.
No worries.
I just started wearing glasses too, sorry. So the total cost of the abatement, I'm sorry, that was correct, is $5,210.80.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, I apologize, and thank you for the correction.
No worries. Any comments, questions? Supervisor Crandall?
Just a quick question. So they haven't responded to anything you've sent to them, basically?
We sent notices to them, we actually posted, before we abated, we actually, if I can go back to a slide here. So on the right slide, you see that kind of stake with that yellow piece of paper attached to it.
Yes.
We gave them a notice that it was our intent, that's what we call an intent-to-abate notice, and we put it on yellow paper with big, bold, red lettering, and we also put it on the trailer as well. So we didn't really want to take the trailer. We did not want to abate it, and I want to be clear for the record, we don't want to abate any property. We want the property owners to take care of that issue. So in an effort to kind of compel them to remove the trailer, we posted this intent-to-abate. So we gave them notices, we spoke, I actually went out to the property and spoke to them at the property. We gave this intent-to-abate, so we kind of took extra steps here to let them know. They told us they were going to move it, they, the guy gave me his word on one occasion that he would take care of it and he would do the right thing. So they didn't do what they were required to do. They were told in writing, they were told verbally. We left them voicemails, so we didn't get the response we were looking for, and the property is currently being listed for sale. So we need to get this lien recorded to protect our, the funds that were used to abate the property.
Thank you.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate the presentation and definitely going to support the recommendation, but I did want to go down the bullet list of the more specific code violations, if only because if I were to receive that, again, we're just trying to provide ample notice that they can bring a property back into conformance. So, and in this case, basically a vacant property, no single-family residents there, just the RVs and stuff like that. So I appreciate the effort to get more granular, but I was a little mystified by the granular list, because, for example, there's not a lot of usefulness to being told the electrical is out of conformance, and you know, you have to get the boxes wired right and all that, when the major point is there's no permitted structure on there, so any electrical that's out of conformance is based on the lack of a permitted structure there. The Chapter 21 references, I think, were particularly dense to me, because it doesn't provide any language that would advise the violator how to bring it into conformance. So to me, by far, the easiest lift was, look, you got no home here, there's some code citation that says RVs are not a permitted use in here, just cut to the chase. But by listing a whole bunch of electrical violations with at least some stated ability to fix, there was no real stated ability to fix it, because the underlying violation was the use of the RV on the property. So I appreciate the effort. I just think, in this case, I don't think it would have changed the outcome, but I don't know that I would have put this particular laundry list together for this particular case, because I don't think it was as clear as it could be as to what conduct needed to be ceased to come into conformance with the code. I kind of got lost in the weeds here, and I'm not saying that the appellants did, but I did.
I'd like to comment on that. Typically, our notices, we do give a general layman's description, you know, located, existing on the property, are these things, and then we list the code sections, because that's a requirement. I believe that, in my opinion, that those codes were necessary, because whatever we put into that notice, that's the only issues that we can abate. And for the electrical wiring, I felt, we felt that those code sections applied to the wiring, therefore, we told them that that was in violation, and via this mechanism, we would then be able to abate the wiring. If we just cited the trailers, we'd only be able to move the trailer, so we had to have something that encompassed or captured the electrical wiring and the fire hazards. And that's why I said, but if there's any recommendations or suggestions, we will be happy to follow those in the future, if you believe that some are necessary.
If I could just add a little bit to that as well. We do have verbiage in there encouraging them to contact our department should they have any questions, as well as the initial outreach that our Code Enforcement officers have to them, we're usually explaining the issues with them as well. And so this is kind of a legalese sort of form, but that's not to say that we do not first explain the challenges or the violations that need to be fixed. And so it was made clear to them that they cannot reside on a vacant parcel in an RV. They're welcome to reside in an RV in our campgrounds, but not on a vacant parcel.
And I appreciate the response from Mr. Beltramo. If you look at Section C, it doesn't say fix your electrical issues or bring up the code, it says remove. I think it's very explicit, and I think that the reading of the code violations and the articles and everything, and I think you stated it perfectly, it gives you that legal ability to now mitigate that problem when you come to the actual abatement process. I think this, we've been over this form how many times? I think this form is perfect. It reads, this is who you contact, this is what you need to come into compliance, and by the way, here's all the codes that you violated. So I have zero issues with the way it's written, I think it needs to cover everything that you need to have on there in order to actually do the job that we're asking you to accomplish.
And if you don't mind, I would just like to kind of reiterate what Director Turner said as well, is that if you are a property owner and you get one of these notices, you do have a responsibility or due diligence to, if you don't understand it, to reach out to an attorney or to reach out to us for clarification or explanation. So there, I would, I believe there's an expectation on them, if they don't understand it, to reach out to someone or seek out help. And if any property owner in the county does receive a notice from us and they do not understand what's required of them, please contact us. We will take that time, we want to work with you and give you the information to bring it into compliance.
And you could tell that just by looking at the timeline. You didn't do 30 days and it's over. You've been working on this since November, so it's appreciated what you do to work with folks to try to get to compliance. I do have one quick question for you. I know that I asked a question in an email, I got a response, but I wanted to ask publicly. There are fines that are going to be submitted through Data Ticket in order to have the extra bite of, this is not just us doing your job and taking your responsibility, but you're going to pay extra fines for the fact that we had to go out of our way to take your responsibility and clean up your mess.
Yes. So we're finalizing, we're actually, I spoke with Data Ticket this morning and finalizing that process out. There is one hurdle that we are working with another department for, but yes, those will be passed on and processed through the Data Ticket system.
And that is greatly appreciated, so thank you very much for doing that. There's nothing further. Let's open it up for public, only those who, and Mr. Valdez, I apologize, you did come up to the podium if you wanted to speak, oh, sorry.
Officer Colon.
Colon, sorry. You did come up to the podium, then you want to still speak?
So Officer Christopher, Code Officer Christopher Colon was the lead officer on this.
Good morning. My name is Christopher Colon. I'm a Code Enforcement Officer with County of Lake. You kind of already touched on what I was going to, what I was going to talk about at the bottom of every notice. After all the code sections, we do give remedial steps in plain, plain English. So again, if there's any questions, I'm more than willing to explain any of it to anybody that gets these notices.
Thank you for your work for cleaning this up. Any other public comment on this item? I see no one moving in the chamber and no hands up in Zoom. A surprise Lifeline comment? All right, we'll bring it back to the board.
Assistant Chair, I move to approve a lien in the amount of $5,210, and direct staff to record the lien against the property with the Lake County Recorder's Office. Was I right about that number?
An 80 cents.
Oh, an 80 cents, sorry. No, no, I didn't finish yet, sorry. I'll go back, I'll start over. I move to approve a lien in the amount of $5,120, or $5,210.80, so I had it transposed as well, and direct staff to record the lien against the property with the Lake County Recorder's Office. And furthermore, after recordation, shall be delivered to the county auditor, who shall enter the amount of lien on the assessment roll as special assessments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. And I apologize, post-motion, I do have a quick question. In the past, I thought there was a cost for writing the lien and submitting that over to our assessors. Is that not, no longer a valid amount?
There is that, but when it was prepared, that did not get captured, so I will take care of that, don't worry.
Okay.
It won't be a power lien, but we will pay for it.
And then my next question, I'm glad that it still made sense to you to change the number, because that's not what I caught. What I caught was, we didn't have a receipt for the $1,000 for storage. If we can get those, all the receipts to add, of what adds up to the contractor costs, because all we had was the junk removal 360.
So, so I think, so there were two invoices in the presentation, are you talking with the memo packet that was uploaded?
Yeah.
I'm not sure what happened. They should have been attached, it should have been one page and two. I'm not sure what happened, but I will ensure that that does happen. But there were two separate invoices, one for the removal and the tow, and then one separate for the storage.
Thank you.
And just on another note, that trailer, we do now need to dispose of it, so it'll either be sold through the county process as any surplus inventory sold, or we will just dispose of it.
All right. Thank you very much. And we will get right back to you. We're going to move on to our 9:45 a.m. item, 6.5, public hearing for the consideration of the vacation of a portion of a... item, 6.5, public hearing for the consideration of the vacation of a portion of a roadway known as Collier Avenue, CR number 306C in the Nice area. And we have our Public Works Department team. Director March.
We can sit in both sides. Good morning, Chair Sabatier and board members. My name is Glenn March. I'm the new Public Works Director. Today, we're going to discuss the item on the agenda. We have Vance here, our county surveyor, to, to present the issue for your consideration.
It should be on, it should be on the agenda right there. One second, they're pulling up the PowerPoint.
Vance, I can highlight some things on this, too. I met with Diane, I think it was like 2019, 2020, who's been asking about this for quite some time. So glad to see it's finally come forward and could work on it. The rest speaks for itself. I just wanted to occupy some time while they're pulling that up.
Okay, here we go. So the portion we have is the Collier Ave. vacation. Go to the next slide. I think I just, oh, I can do it. First time I've tried this PowerPoint.
And so while you're doing that, Collier is, is a cross-section to Lakeview Boulevard or Lake Shore Boulevard. And on that area where this property is, the Boathouse Bar and Grill is there. It's been there for years and they actually have an amenity where people come to the restaurant and bar to, they used to dock and whatnot. And so I think that's one of the main purposes for this. It's actually one of the main restaurants in the district and in Nice, the local area, and has been a site and an area for people to go to for quite some time. So again, just filling time while talking while you're pulling this.
I think if you just scroll down, that will probably work just fine. Maybe just scroll with the mouse button. Okay. Well, the portion of this is Collier Avenue. And an application was made by Ms. Diane D. Michelle, doing business as the Boathouse Bar and Grill. And Collier Avenue was created by the Clear Lake Villas subdivision, which recorded July 1, 1922. And do I have the mouse there? Just scroll down to the next one there. Okay. So this area on Collier Avenue has been used as parking for the Boathouse Bar and Grill. If I can get the street view. I think we're pretty familiar with the area.
I'd say keep going and we'll, we'll flip through the presentation once we've got it figured out, if you don't mind.
And the portion for the vacation is to vacate and use for parking and the expansion of boat docks for the Boathouse Bar and Grill. To answer one of your questions about the roadway vacation, the 25 feet would go to the center of that portion of Collier Avenue. And we were concerned about the adjoining neighbor and Mr. and Mrs. Morse, who owned the property to the east of Collier Avenue. And they are in the audience as long as with the owner's applicant and the owner. And speaking, it sounds like the two have, can come up with an agreement to continue use via lot line adjustment, via an easement, or anything to that nature. Now, I want to make clear that when we vacate this area, it's an easement for all intents and purposes. So we're only vacating the public's rights to use that portion. Any other existing underlying easements would remain in place. To backstep a hair, on February, the, May 23rd, the Planning Commission heard this for general plan conformity and they approved it. We had the resolution, a notice of intent. I posted public notices. Few questions came in in regards to it. Oh, here we go. Okay, let's just scroll down to the image right there. Yeah, there we go. That's the portion of Collier Avenue that we're proposing to vacate. As you can see, the Land of Morris is on the east and the Boathouse is on the right. Here we go to the next one. Just scroll down. That's the street view. That's the area that's been used for parking and according to the applicant, it's been used for parking for the past 50-plus years. Yeah. Let's go down to the next one. Now, this is how, if the board approves this vacation, the part in red would go to the property that's occupied by the Boathouse. That would be the westerly 25 feet of Collier Avenue. The easterly 25 feet would go to the Land of Morris. And under Civil Code 831, as you can see, the owners bound by a road are presumed to own to the center of the road, but the contrary can be shown and that's a whole separate issue. In this case, it's a subdivision from 1921. Both owners would go to the center. And if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer it.
Thank you very much. You've already said your, your piece. Are there any questions or comments?
Supervisor Green?
Just to comment, not on the substance of the project itself, very excited to see this move forward and want to support it. That said, I do think that the planning commission hearing, the duly noticed public hearing, did have a procedural defect in it such that I'm not super comfortable with the findings of general plan conformity that derive from that particular hearing. I'm not going to use that to object to us proceeding here today. I just wanted to note that procedural history. So my vote will reflect that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I know that we saw this, a different one a while back, which was for Bell Haven. And I had voted against doing that and I was kind of in the same mindset and the same in here and I appreciate the conversations that we've had. I know that I emailed Director March saying I wasn't quite sure what I was planning to do today, but I'm going to approve this and I'll just explain why I had concerns. There seems to be a financial impact or a financial request and almost seemed like a gifting of public goods, but I get it, it's an easement.
Yes.
I just wish that we would get people for weed abatement to also clean up those same easements in the same way. So that's something that we can work on in the future here. I'm glad to hear that the neighbors are okay with it. That was a concern of mine, that there seemed to be a plan that did not seem to be possible. But if the neighbors are here and willing to work with the Boathouse and make it work, then I think that's absolutely a benefit to the Boathouse and I'd love to see this happen. So today, I will be approving this vacation of the road.
Just, I heard the mention of like gift of public, and I know you, you kind of talked your way out of that, but I just wanted to say they've already been using it, well, the public has been using it as a parking lot anyhow. So they, it's always been used as this, it's just not allowing people to camp there because it's a public spot, if that makes sense. And it helps the, helps the economic development of the county as well. I know that, so I think it's a good thing, that's why.
And I think it will be a good thing. And there is other lake access nearby, so it doesn't restrict lake access because of that one change. So again, I think it checks all the boxes.
Yeah, just as a note, this portion has never been maintained by county for public funds as like Lake Shore Boulevard or the portion north of Lake Shore Boulevard for Collier Avenue. That is a county.
That's why this came up initially because there was a requirement for handicap. And so they were, they were trying to get something fixed there and this came up and so Scott came out and met with us back in like 2019, 2020 because it was the county, you know, it was the county's easement or area. So yeah, that's how, what struck a lot of this. She's been trying to deal with this for years, so wanted to highlight that as well.
And glad it's coming to a head. Let's go ahead and open up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this item? Please come on up to the podium or raise your hand in Zoom. Okay. No one's moving in the chamber and no hands in Zoom. We'll bring it back to the board for action.
I offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered.
Is there a Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Green?
Nay.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would it be easier if I, like a thumb drive or something?
We're going to go ahead and take a five-minute break and we will reconvene, six minutes, we will reconvene at 10:10.
I drank this and coughed.
Hi, I'm Robin. Nice to meet you.
And we are back. We are going to continue with item 6.6, our 10 a.m. item, public hearing, sitting concurrently as Clear Lake Key CSA number one, number two, number six, number 13, number 20, number 21, Board of Supervisors, Kelseyville County Waterworks District number three, and Lake County Sanitation District, Board of Directors. Consideration of A, resolution confirming collections of annual lighting fees; B, resolution confirming collections of delinquent water fees; C, resolution confirming collections of delinquent water and sewer fees; D, resolution of delinquent sewer fees for Lake County Sanitation District. And we have Director Bore.
Hi, I'm actually going to turn this item over to Jesse. And there's four different resos, like you said, and one, some are delinquents and some are just a standard tax rule.
Thank you.
So this is our annual public hearing to hear protests regarding the placement of lighting fees and delinquent water and sewer fees onto the 24, 25 tax rule. We're going to offer four resolutions today and if approved by your board, those will be placed on the 24, 25 tax rule. There, we can just start with the lighting fees. So the first resolution is to place the lighting fees onto the 24, 24, 24, 25 tax rule. This isn't delinquent lighting fees, this is just the fees that we collect in order to pay for our lighting districts.
Okay, any questions regarding that? I do have a quick question. I know this is something that will probably come up for every single resolution. I know we asked last year for a list or at least a total amount of what was being put on the tax rule. I do not see a running total for what is being placed on the tax rule. Did I miss that? Is that somewhere in here? Do you have that?
We have the amounts that we sent out on the tax rule letters back in March when we came to board before. We don't have a total yet because we've actually given the customers until July 15th to get their payments in. So we would have that final list available after that.
Okay. Just wanted to check in with the board because I know last time we had asked for that.
We do have a list. I have amounts that I could share, but of course, that won't be the final amount as customers are still making their payments.
Okay. Yeah, it's, they have a certain amount of time and if they pay it, then it doesn't get on the tax rule. If it doesn't get paid, then it does get placed.
Yeah, that's correct.
If it's possible to share those numbers, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah. So last year, the final tax rule in our sewer districts, we placed around $707,000 onto the tax rule. Majority of that was the Clear Lake District. I mean, some of our smaller districts like Corinthian Bay, we placed, you know, $540 onto the tax rule. In comparison to this year, the tax rule letters we sent out for the sewer districts was $410,000. So it's a big drop from last year and that's, that total should drop as people are making payments in. The water side is a lot lower. We did about, we did about, I don't have a total here, so let's see. I think in the end, we rolled about $15,000 in the water fees. We sent out letters this year for $29,000. But it was, like I mentioned before, that number should decrease as people are making payments. The water side's always lower than the sewer side just because of the shut-off policies.
Okay. And do you have any numbers for lighting?
Well, it'd be the revenue that we receive. So I guess that would be the amounts in the budget.
Let's go ahead and move on to the next resolution.
I'm sorry. Supervisor Green?
Just a quick question as to form for county council for this reso and all the resos. Signature line on the Kelseyville one, for example, is board, chair, board of soups? Should it be board of directors, depending on how these various districts? I know we all sit in as the board of directors, as the board of soups, but just on the signature line for the chair.
Yes, so your board may offer the resolution separately and since, at least at the onset, it's being treated collectively, unconcurrently with your board, with your board having different positions, right?
Mm-hmm.
As board of supervisors, board of directors, the suggestion here would be to treat each resolution separately with reference to your board, your board's position.
Yeah.
Of course, that would correspond with the particular district and staff could walk you through that for each resolution so that if there is an amendment that needs to be made on the signature field, that can be addressed at that time.
In the past, we've always offered the resolutions one at a time and each title is different. I think the sewer districts, Lakos and his board of directors.
That makes sense. Thank you. Do you want to keep going? I don't think there's any further questions.
So the next one, it's the resolution for the collection of delinquent water fees in the county service areas. That's in county service area Spring Valley, Finley, Konotei, Soda Bay, and North Lakeport. So once again, these are for any past due amounts over 60 days, that's considered delinquent. Those letters are sent out to the customers in March. We will only be collecting delinquent fees up to the December bill. So that is in contrast to prior years, we would collect 60 days past due up until a point of this board meeting.
I appreciate you, I appreciate you making that specification just because we did just go over that and change the policy not, not too long ago, so thank you.
After that, we have the resolution confirming collection of delinquent charges for Kelseyville County Waterworks District. So this would be for water and sewer fees and it's the same thing. It's anyone who's over 60 days delinquent from their December bill.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments? Thank you for the additional information of the amounts that we are looking to anticipate, though with a potential reduction as people pay those things off. Is it possible to let us know what the total amounts are? I know, I appreciated you giving us the totals from last year, if that can be done again for the following year so that we can make sure we, we understand what is being put on the tax rule.
Yeah, like put that on the, on the memos as an attachment. We could do that.
Perfect.
We'll add that to our policy.
Thank you very much. Any further comments? Let's open it up for the public. Anyone wish to speak on this item? Please come on up. All right, no one's getting up and no hands in Zoom. And it looks like we're taking each one individually.
Just one more process question.
Please.
Just one more process question. So these are protest hearings of sorts, but I don't see exhibits of those fees or delinquent water fees that this resolution would approve collection of. So is that something that gets calculated after we approve the resolution? I'm just wondering how the public would have any practical ability to protest unless some type of notice has been given, because I don't see it in this item, that there's a fear, fear of fine that would be imposed.
The notice does mention what the delinquent amount is and it does say that there's a 10% penalty if placed onto the tax rule. And that's the notice sent out to all the customers.
And embarrassingly enough, last year I did receive a notice. It does tell you the date of this public hearing today to come and protest and also gives you the timeline of when you should pay it off so it doesn't become a tax lien on your property taxes. and also gives you the timeline of when you should pay it off so it doesn't become a tax lien on your property taxes.
We don't prepare a list typically for presentation to the board for hearings like this that would give one last opportunity for public knowledge and awareness of these things.
It might be protected information showing people's names and past due accounts and account numbers.
Well, I know the tax collector manages to do it. All right, thank you.
And that's why I appreciate you giving us some anticipated numbers, even if we did have a list. A lot of those things can get crossed off, so it's not a true list of what we'll get on the tax rule. And I appreciate your sensitivity to wanting to give people a chance without making a public notice that they are behind on paying their bills when it comes to the property tax collector or to the tax collector. Those are already in arrears and are, you're supposed to by state law put that in the newspaper that they have not paid and they are behind already. So I think it's slightly different, but I appreciate the process. I appreciate you giving us some numbers, and if we get those on a regular basis to just know how much was put on there, I think I'm good with moving forward with as-is.
We also place a ad in the record before this, showing the date of today's hearing two times.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Let's go ahead. I think I already did open it up for public comment. I'm waiting for action on each resolution.
I'll offer the resolution confirming collections of the annual lighting fees.
Resolution has been offered. Do we need to make a change to that?
No.
Perfect.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
Supervisor Piska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Offer the resolution confirming collection of delinquent sewer fees in Lake County Sanitation District, sitting as the Board of Directors.
And for that, with the amendment that your board may wish to amend, the signature field on that, the signature field of the Chair Board of Supervisors, amend that to Chair Board of Directors.
I offer the resolution as amended.
All right.
Resolution's been offered.
Director Simon?
Yes.
Director Crandall?
Aye.
Director Green?
Aye.
Director Piska?
Yes.
And Director Sabatier?
Aye.
Ms. Chair, offer the resolution confirming collections of delinquent water and sewer fees. Is there an amendment needed on this one?
Yeah, it looks like the CSAs are sitting as the Board of Supervisors concurrently.
And I believe those are, just for clarification, delinquent water fees in county service areas 2, 6, 13, 20, and 21.
So move.
Okay, so we have a resolution offered.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
Supervisor Piska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye. One more.
Is that Kelseyville?
Yeah.
Offer the resolution confirming collection of delinquent charges for services rendered in Kelseyville County Waterworks District number three, sitting as the Board of Directors. So with the amendment that the signature line, State Chair, Board of Directors.
Resolution has been offered.
Director Simon?
Aye.
Director Crandall?
Aye.
Director Green?
Aye.
Director Piska?
Yes.
And Director Sabatier?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we are gonna move on to our 10:15 a.m. item. Hearing, consideration of post-abatement hearing on account and proposed assessment of abatement, located at 3112 Athol Road, Lucerne. Hopefully I said that right. APN 803437301, property owner Yvonne Cox. Director Turner.
Thank you. Mariaa Turner, Director, Community Development Department. We did receive a request from Ms. Cox to continue this item. She is unable to attend today due to a doctor's appointment. So if it pleases the board, we would just request rescheduling or continuance to the next available agenda.
Okay. Any comments on that? Are we okay with continuation? I'm looking at Vice Chair Crandall since it's in your district.
I was just looking over here.
Yes, for a date and time certain, and I'm looking to our deputy to find out what time. Yes.
I know next week is pretty crowded, so if it, I'm leaving it up to you. Next week? Okay. Oh, I mean, if it's okay with the board, sorry.
I'm fine with that unless, even if you want to go to the 23rd, if it's, I mean, it's, if it's too crowded, I mean, I'm just saying. I'm fine either way. I'm just opening it up for everyone to chime in.
Do we know what would work for Ms. Cox? Have we been told?
This was just a fluke, I think, so I don't know that she has any extended travel plans or anything, so.
Okay.
Yeah, no, if that works for the department, I think it works for me.
Super 23 and 11:30?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. Let's go ahead and open it up to public for any input on continuing this to the 23rd at 11:30. I see no one getting up in the chamber, no hands up in Zoom, coming back for action.
I move to postpone this hearing until the, or continue this hearing until the 23rd of July at?
11:30, I believe. We have a motion and a second. AM, yes. Let's not do PM. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we have one more item. We'll get to you in a little bit. Let's go ahead and continue if we can, Behavioral Health. Let's see, I believe we were on the third one, 7.6. Consideration of agreement between County of Lake and Davis Guest Home in the amount of $220,000 for fiscal year 2425. Ms. Andrews.
Hello, yes, this is another contract with, it's, Davis Guest Home has multiple facilities where we also place conserved clients and people coming out of the hospital who need a lower level of care. We like to continue to contract with them.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? So just a quick comment. I want to thank you, same comment, I won't make it for the next one, but similar to the next one. Thank you for the memo for providing some idea of how many people are being served by the contract. There is one slight concern, I'm not gonna make a big deal, but in one of the items in the consent agenda, it had like an annual report, needs to be submitted within 90 days that the fiscal year is over, and I'm not seeing that in some of the newer contracts. And I'm almost, and it says, if I remember the rest of the part from the consent agenda one, with a format provided by Behavioral Health. So my guess is you're asking specific data points that you're asking for input or things like that. And I don't see any specific data points that are being requested. It does say you need to provide whatever state and federal government requires. But I know that I'm always looking for, how many people are we serving? What's the outcomes of what we're doing? And I think that's, that's, the reports have the ability to do that. Is it a necessary thing to add in those cases? Or are the state and federal already what you need as far as the data? To know what the return on the investment is?
I would have to have Elise bring that back. I'm not sure.
Okay.
What's in there?
I'll have the larger conversation with her, just to get an idea of what is exactly that the state and the feds are asking so we can look at that same data. Thank you. Anything further? Supervisor Green.
Yeah, thank you. This seems similar. We went to RFQ, so we've had a contract with them in years past. This is a new contract, and this is a hard specialty service. That said, Stanislaus County is a long haul. During the RFQ process, nobody else closer to home popped up that would provide similar services?
Not that we're not already contracted with, yes.
We wish there was stuff closer to home.
Absolutely.
That's a long drive.
All right, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. I see none in the Zoom room, no one moving in the chamber, bringing it back for action.
Ms. Chair, I'll move to approve agreement between County of Lake and Davis Guest Home in the amount of $220,000 for fiscal year 2024 and '25, and authorize the board chair to sign.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. 7.6, consideration of amendment number four to the agreement between County of Lake and Willow Glen Care Center for Adult Residential Support Services and Specialty Mental Health Services, with no change to the contract maximum for fiscal years 2223, 2324, and 2425, and authorize the board chair to sign. Ms. Andrews?
Yes, and this again is another facility that we have multiple clients placed at. They have different levels of care as well, and we have clients who are there long-term.
Okay. And if I'm correct in the amendments, one of the amendments actually reduced the total not to exceed by 100,000.
Yeah.
And the fact that the rates are increasing and you're still keeping that same amount. I know that, I appreciated seeing that, especially not knowing where the state's going to be in the near future, in the next two years. So thank you very much for that. And also the data point within the memo. Anything further before I open up for public? Let's go ahead and open it up from the public. Any comments on this? Seeing nothing in the Zoom room and nothing in the chamber, we're bringing it back to the board for action.
Move to approve amendment number four to the agreement between County of Lake and Willow Glen Care Center for Adult Residential Support Services and Specialty Mental Health Services, with no change to the contract maximum for fiscal years 2022, 23, 2324, and 2425, and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries. All right, we're just getting through these. 7.7, consideration of agreement between County of Lake and Victor Treatment Centers for Specialty Mental Health Services in the amount of $660,000 for fiscal year 2425. Ms. Andrews?
Yeah, so this facility is actually a little different than other facilities is where Middletown School District actually has a contract with this facility where they place children. And the county with Medi-Cal beneficiaries is actually responsible for the fee for service provided by the doctors in the facility. So that's what this contract is, is that we cover the fee for service for the providers in the facility, for the youth that are placed there to receive treatment by the providers.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions from the board?
Was there RFQ on this one?
I don't believe so.
And this is a continuation of a prior contract?
Yeah, we had a contract with them last year. The children were placed there last year.
So my comment on this, number one, our previous contract, because it was actually amended in our consent agenda, changes the name to Victor Treatment Centers, Inc., and here we're back to Victor Treatment Centers. Should we just change it now to Inc.?
Yes.
So that we don't have to come back with an amendment to change the name?
Yes.
So I think that needs to, I don't know how many times it shows up in the agreement, but Mr. Guintavano, if we do an amendment to change Victor Treatment Centers, Inc. for all times that Victor Treatment Centers shows up, that's good enough for an amendment?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And then second, you mentioned Middletown. Is that the difference between last year's contract, which was 50,000 and 660,000 this year? It seems like quite a large jump. Is it because we're getting more schools involved or more students involved?
No, this, just the children that are currently in the placement will be there longer than expected. So, and we were, the pass-through Thursday, so they get 65% of the rate that the state assigned to us. So that 65% since payment reform is a really high rate, so that's why the dollar amount increased.
And is this part of the Medi-Cal reimbursement that we're also seeing struggles of being reimbursed?
Yes.
Okay. And at this point, I do have concerns for that, but I also don't want to throw a wrench in the wheel of this. Our schools need to have access to these facilities. So for today, other than the amendment, I'm gonna go ahead and move forward with that. Any further comments or questions? All right, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. I see no hands in the Zoom room, no one getting up in the chamber. And if we can do an amendment to the name of the agency, I'm looking for action.
Let's do that. Move to approve the agreement between the County of Lake as amended with Victor Treatment Service, Victor Treatment Centers, Inc. for Specialty Mental Health Services in the amount of $660,000 for fiscal year 2024, '25, and authorize the chair to sign.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. All right, last one for Behavioral Health. 7.8, consideration of the agreement between County of Lake and New Life Health Authority, DBA New Life LLC, for Substance Use Disorder Outpatient Drug-Free Services, Intensive Outpatient Treatment Services and Narcotic Treatment Program Services in the amount of $10 million for fiscal year 2425. Ms. Andrews?
Yes, we'd like to pull this and bring it back next week.
Okay. Any comments or questions from board members? Let's go ahead and open it up for the public on the pulling of the item and bringing it back next week. I see nobody in the Zoom room and no one in the chamber. So we'll see that next week.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm certain we can handle 7.9 before the 7:40 item or 10:40 item. Consideration of amendments to the County of Lake COVID-19 Public Health Non-Emergency Work Site Protocol. Mr. Guintavano?
Yes, good morning, members of the board. So on January 9, 2024, California Department of Public Health updated its State Public Health Officer Order, which changed and impacted Cal OSHA's COVID-19 prevention non-emergency standards, in particular with respect to isolation of COVID-19 cases. That's really the main change. And so this gave us an opportunity to, to make certain updates, much of which is housekeeping matters on our current COVID-19 non-emergency policy for the County of Lake. And so on the agenda packet, apologize for this. It did indicate that there were, there was a red line version and a clean version. Apparently, the, based on the way it was posted on the agenda, the red line versions didn't necessarily show the red lines, but it is available upon request. I have it here in front of me. In reference to the clean version that is included in the agenda packet, the main substantive change would be located mainly on page seven of that clean version, which deals with the isolation and quarantine requirements in order to make it consistent with the California Department of Public Health's update. Much of the other provisions remain unchanged. There's no change to the definition of the infectious period. That is the one correction that needs to be made in the memo, on the board memo. There was no change in that definition, and much of the COVID-19 prevention regulations remain the same, and it's reflected there in the, in the board memo. So for your board's consideration, staff is asking to, is requesting to approve the amendments to the County of Lake's COVID-19 Public Health Non-Emergency Work Site Protocol.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions regarding this? And this is just a formality to make sure that we stay within the margins of OSHA and workers' comp and all of those things. So thank you very much for bringing this to us. Opening up for public comment. Any comments on this item? Lots of excitement today. Nobody coming up on the chamber and no one in the Zoom room, bringing it back to the board for action.
Move to approve the amendments to the County of Lake COVID-19 Public Health Non-Emergency Work Site Protocol.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. We're gonna move on to item 6.8 or 10:40 a.m. hearing. Consideration of request for post-abatement hearing on account and proposed assessment of abatement. Location 15892 Kugelman Street, Lower Lake, APN 01202586. Property owners Salomi Lazo Hernandez, Patricia Lazo Hernandez. And we have our code enforcement team back again.
Hello again. Mariaa Turner, Director, Community Development.
Thank you very much. We do need to do a swearing. Thank you very much, we do need to do a swearing in, anybody who will want to speak up on this item and provide testimony, we will need you to swear in, including if you're online, please raise your hand right now.
All right, with your right hand raised, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Turn it over to Code Enforcement Manager, Marcus Beltramo, and we will get our next PowerPoint set up. And look who came in, doesn't allow you to be here. We'll go ahead and do the staff presentation, but then the opportunity for you to speak if you wanted to just have a seat for a few minutes.
Thank you, Director Turner. I appreciate it.
All right, so this will be an abbreviated presentation as, for time-saving purposes. The Kugelman, we've been here before, the board for the Kugelman property on multiple occasions, but we will hit the material facts in this presentation. We're here today for a hearing and account and proposed assessment for basically a lien hearing for 15892 Kugelman Street, Lower Lake, California. Again, we provide a map to show the location, which has Highway 29 and Highway 53, so it is in a industrial-commercial type area, but there are residential properties as you go back down towards the end of Kugelman, there are three properties back there. The property owners, Salome Lazo Hernandez and Patricia Lazo Hernandez, zoning designation again, SR, suburban reserve, the lot type, it does have a single-family home on the property, it's about 3.97 acres. So, initially, when we started this process, these were the photos taken in January of 2022, and as you can see, there's an RV on there, some unpermitted tent structures that are up on a permanent basis. Again, there's just some more pictures of that, there was trash and rubbish kind in there, it wasn't in, wasn't in that bad of condition at that time, it was still in a non-compliant condition, though. We did issue an initial notice of nuisance in order to abate on January 21, 2022. You can see the codes there, I'm not going to recite them as, for time-saving purposes, they are in the BOS memo. We then, as we went, we got a, more, as we, as the property evolved, the violations evolved and became numerous and other violations, so we issued what we call a superseding notice, it supersedes the initial notice that we issued, so this is the notice of nuisance in order to abate for that superseding notice. Again, we listed numerous codes, more than 20 code violations on the property, those are the determinations we arrived at. We did do an inspection warrant, and as the violations continue to evolve, there were unpermitted structures being used for storage, so we had to issue new orders, we did an inspection warrant, and on advisement of council, we did this in two abatements, that was on, I wouldn't say guidance, but this suggestion of county council is to do it in two. So, we did, and this once, but to, this hearing here is a little different, is there are two abatements that were conducted to bring the property into compliance. Here is the last order that we acted under, just for, to give the board more clarity, more information. The reason we did it in two parts is that the first abatement, they had these unpermitted structures, the tent structures, some lean-to structures that were being used for storage. Well, the storage technically was not in compliance because it was not in public view, it could not be seen. When we did the first abatement, we took down those tent structures, and when we took down the trench, tent structures, the storage was now exposed and open in public view, which is a violation of Chapter 21 of the Lake County Code. So, after we did that, we gave some period for the, for the property owners and the responsible parties to correct the storage issue, that did not happen, and then we went ahead and issued this order here. I'm not going to show you, we, we have extensive amount of documentation, video, over 2,000 pictures were taken on this property throughout the entire investigation and process, these are just to give you an idea of what we saw on the property and we were dealing with. Again, we're dealing with junk, raw, not junk, trash, rubbish, inoperable vehicles scattered over the property, non-compliant fencing, the picture on the left and the picture on the right really give you a good understanding of what was occurring on this property, and just-
If you can please not speak during this presentation.
It just for context, this was what we were initially dealing with, this is where the property went, or ended up becoming. There's a lean-to structure. So, we did do, we did perform the abatement, this is the second abatement after we completed the second abatement, the first abatement photos almost didn't look like we did an abatement because the, the storage had now become open and outdoor, so I provided these photos to show what the property looks like, this is after the second abatement, we would say it was a vast improvement, although, so I just wanted to give some stats for the first abatement, for the first abatement, we took 20 tires, 550 pounds of scrap metal, two televisions, two gallons of paint, 2.78 tons of rubbish, garbage, and miscellaneous materials, and we took down approximately three tent structures and one lean-to structure were removed during the first abatement. The second abatement, we removed 21,821 pounds of miscellaneous materials were removed, and we removed one vehicle, we did do a, we towed one vehicle off the property. I will reference this vehicle later as we get to the costs of the abatements. The first abatement cost $5,800, the second abatement $11,519.27, the tow cost $300. The vehicle that was towed, we contacted the registered owner, registered owner came down, paid the $300 to get the vehicle back, he informed us that he was having some people on the party do some maintenance work for him and had paid them, so this was a violation that was unknown to us, as it was basically an unpermitted auto repair, auto repair was occurring, unpermitted auto repair was occurring on the property, so this was a new thing for us that came to our attention. Administrative costs, the first abatement $2,113.90, the administrative cost for the second abatement $1,899.27, so we are recommending the Board of Supervisor approval lien in the amount of $21,332.44, hopefully the math is right, I'm pretty sure, the board will correct me if it's not, and our recommendation is to direct staff to record the lien against this property, and at this time, this concludes my presentations.
All right, thank you very much, are there any questions from board members before we open it up for the property owners, or I see we also have some neighbors?
Obviously, just one comment, obviously, this is my district, we have been here multiple times on this, I have been out to the site too in the last, I think, six or eight weeks, and, you know, we'll see what the public comment adds here today, so I just wanted to say that.
All right, thank you very much, so I apologize for having to do this, but I know last time when we were here, I want to make sure everybody speaks to the board, not to each other, I know that you, there had been some tension between neighbors last time we were here, I want to make sure that we don't recreate that situation, please speak to us, and let's, one at a time, if we could. I do want to give the property owners the first chance to speak, since this is the property that was abated and the property that would be lien, so please come and approach and introduce yourselves.
I'm Patricia Hernandez Lazo, my husband's at work. First of all, we didn't get permission for our properties to be merged, those two separate properties, then they, nobody had permission to merge, the Cessers Office did not have permission to merge my properties.
So, at this moment in time, this is not a public hearing about the merger?
Well, they, that all boils down to them putting it on one thing to put my house on that property, the property has no prop, house on it, the property at question, they said my property were in houses, they didn't have a problem with it. They only have a problem with the, down below, because the neighbors want that property, they work in collusion with each other. These guys tear down the fence, make the mess, throw their garbage, everything in my yard, okay, they have a restraint order, they shouldn't even be here. This is, they work with them, they take the pictures, they send it to them, their house is in violation, their original deed says exempt from building, no building's supposed to be there, and their house is in violation, they had no permits, this guy we've called, no return call, I've asked, called him several times, left him several messages to talk to him, and he's never returned the call. So, he, because this Kevin, what's his name, yeah, Kevin, at the Lakeport, the manager, Lakeport- Senator, city manager, told me that I have letters from him, emails, stating that Monk is the supervisor for that area, to contact him, so we tried contacting him and never got a return call, because we were telling him the situation, because the whole thing started because he wants my property.
So, just, just real quick, the property in question that was abated, that was cleaned, is your property?
Yes.
Okay, and, and today we're talking about the cost of the cleanup?
Yes, I don't care the cost of the cleanup, I care that the reason that this cost came is because of my neighbors, it's all because of my neighbors.
Ma'am?
Trying to steal property that don't belong to them.
I need you to pause, I need you to pause. A neighbor's situation is a civil matter?
Yes, it's a civil matter.
I'll ask Mr. Guintavano, but a nuisance, which is garbage-
What they did.
And again, that's a, that's a civil matter, we're not-
They tore it over, they tear down, they've tore down my fence more than 30 times.
I need you to pause, when I need you to pause. Please, we can't both be speaking at the same time. Issues between neighbors is not a matter for the Board of Supervisors to deal with, and again, I'd love to go to Mr. Guintavano, if I'm incorrect, if you need to clarify, but today is about a cleanup, and if there's an issue with a neighbor, that is a different situation to deal with.
Same situation.
No, it is a different, it's not something that gets rectified here at the Board of Supervisors.
They caused the garbage.
Can you please introduce yourself, sir?
Richard Saunders, and I live on the property-
If you can speak in the microphone.
I'm Richard Saunders, I live on the property. I, them tents, and the thing, it says on the website, you could have a storage facility up to 120 square foot without a permit, you don't have to ask for permission for it, it does state that, you know, they, they tell me, anything I do on the property, like I got these, the tents, you know, they tell me I have to have permission, that they're against the code. Well, if, they sell it at the store, you know, for these tents, it's a portable garage is what it's called, all this stuff was combined it into there, and what the problem is, is they didn't like it, so therefore, it was bad, that's why they called him up, this wasn't like this.
So, I'm going to ask for a pause, can you describe the code and the violation that does exist, or did exist before the abatement?
So, for the tent structures-
They're garage tent structures.
Okay. So, one, the, we believe that the tent structures, the material for the tent structures did not meet the fire code, we didn't believe that, they have to be of a certain material. Two, the 120 square foot area that he's referencing, so anything under 120 square feet does not require a building permit, although, if it's a permanent structures, which these were up for extensive period of time, more than 30 days, more than six months, at that point, they become permanent structures, they require zoning clearances, that's to let you know where you can put accessory structures on your property, there was no zoning clearance obtained, some of the tents were bigger than 120 square feet, and at that part, they require building permits.
And so, something similar to if it's a vacant property and it's meant to be a residential, you can't have those accessory structures until you have a residential, and then you have to go through the zoning clearance?
That's correct.
Is that approximately what you're saying?
Okay.
I, I, I want to try to move through this, you're, you're not denying that that was, the abatement was done on your property and that all of those items were found on your property?
Items, all his possessions.
And again-
That's what they took.
Again, today's issue that we're talking about is whether or not to move forward with the lien of the amount for the abatement and the administrative fees for the process of cleaning up a property which you are the owner of, and if-
But, my property was two different properties.
Okay, but it's still your property, and so I think at that, at that part, we're-
When they did the thing, they violated that because they-
The warrant would be invalid because they have the wrong address.
Because it's the wrong address, they changed my APN number. I have two separate APN numbers, and they changed it totally to a new APN number, which is not my APN number, it's not on my deed, and I did not get permission for that APN number for it being changed by the Cessers, and it's illegal for the Cessers Office to change it.
Okay, so, at this moment in time, I'm going to ask you to sit down so we can continue hearing from others, thank you for your testimony, and we will listen to other input as well, and then we'll continue through this process, thank you.
My husband's-
I believe we had others who raised their hand to be sworn in, please come on up to the microphone, introduce yourselves and provide your testimony.
My name is Bill Stone, I'm one of the owners of the property in the neighborhood. And I was already sworn in?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to say today that you guys need to get, file this lien on her property and get this thing going, this has been going on for a long, long time, I was here nine months, almost a year ago, I believe, this has been going on for two years after that, that's three years, we, this cannot go on for three years. This, the place now, whoops, excuse me, looks worse than any of those pictures that he presented now, they're, they're living in the trailer, we're scared to death that the thing's going to catch on fire, because they have wires from her house, her house, down to the trailer, like 100 yards, if you guys remember, the valley fire was started by faulty wire, so at some point, the county is going to have to take some liability here if something happens to my property. Now, as you guys know, we have a hard enough time getting fire insurance as it is, I'm afraid if they see this property, that they're going to cancel my fire insurance.
Please don't speak if you're not on the microphone.
A nice place to live, that's clean, that doesn't have trash blowing around, recently, somebody had, went number two in a can, and threw it in our garbage can. That's just disgustingly disgus, I can't even describe how disgusted I am by that.
And I want to make sure that we stay focused on the report today and the lien and the cleanup that did occur.
Okay, well, you guys need to put a lien on this property, you need to keep going after these people, because they're the ones responsible, the homeowners.
I do have a question for you, you did mention of some potential new violations, has, has that been submitted, is that something that you're aware of?
So, we are aware that the property does have existing violations on it, we were waiting for the lien hearing to take place, also, hopefully, it'll be all right, but there is a criminal proceeding ongoing as well, that's been continued on several occasions.
Okay, we'll leave that at that, anything further?
No, I just, I just hope we can get this thing resolved, and like I said, we just want a nice neighborhood to live in up there, thank you.
Thank you. If we can, I'm going to ask you to leave the room if you can't follow procedure, I need you to speak when it's your turn to speak and not when others are speaking, please. Someone else was raising their hand, please come, can you please leave the room? I'm asking you to leave the room. I'm, I'm asking you to leave the room. No, actually, there is a state law that allows me to remove you if I've asked you multiple times to follow procedure and you are not following procedure.
Well, I'm homeowner, and so is my husband, and this is all baloney, baloney, because it's all lies.
I need you to leave the room.
We have a fence-
I need you to leave the room.
That asshole is going to jail, because he knows he's arrested, he puts fucking-
Out of the room! Please, sir. And I'm, I'm going to ask you to pause for one question, Mr. Guintavano, is there a statement that needs to be made about the removal of an individual when they- when they are not following our procedures and being obstructive?
Yes, Mr. Chair, your board has the discretion, you as the chair has the discretion to remove anyone who is causing a disruption, not following procedures during the board meeting.
Thank you very much. Please, sir.
Yes, my name is Augustine Salazar. Coming here because really we have hard time. This has been going for over three, three years. And thank, thanks all of you guys for coming to check that because really, I make my house, my little house to get retirement in there. And I cannot get retirement, you know, because all, all, because all these people bring all whatever. And she loves her, my, to leg hand to pull whatever in there. And I try to sell my property, so how can I sell my property? There's no way I can sell my property, my property because it's lost value. And then also, with all these fires, the insurance they won't up. So, and a lot of people does not understand that, like we get hard times, the homeowners, to get insurance. Because all what's going on in there. And then also, there's a lot of people coming there, then I'm supposed to be right there. We get scared, really we get scared. So I know it's like, it's not you guys' problem, but it's still like, nobody can listen in there, like, you know, nobody can say in there.
And, and I appreciate your testimony, but I want to make sure to redirect you to the lien today and the abatement that occurred for the cleanup.
Okay, thank you. It's all like, I always wanna say thank you guys, and I appreciate you guys, everything is okay.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? I think that was all the hands that I saw going up. And I know that we did see quite a, a difference between the first time that this was brought to us and the last pictures that you showed us. So appreciate the work that has been done. I do have a quick question, it's the same question I asked before. We are following up with fines as well separately through the data ticket process.
I noticed a violation was issued for this problem.
Okay. I see Supervisor Green, you have your pen.
Just to clarify, I went through the whole picture pack and I appreciate the presentation. And I'm reminded of the phrase, good fences make good neighbors. But I was a little confused about some of the fences. It looked like there may be interior chicken fencing or something within the property. But I also saw like elevations that showed me a residence, a blue residence that was probably off the property. So since I couldn't really get my head around, from the various exhibits, there was so much trash in them, where the property lines were. Did you have a good sense of where the property lines were? Or was there fencing around the property that was, that allowed you to clearly delineate that you were on this property versus a right of way or an easement on an adjacent property?
So there was a survey done by Conserve Survey. So we did have that, that document at our disposal to go by. But the fencing that we took down was mostly in the front, which is set back from the property line. And then there was fencing on the side that we believe, based on the survey, was on their property. And it was a fence that they had erected. So we felt comfortable that we, the fence that was removed was located on the subject property.
Okay. And not that I'm gonna litigate this point in any way, but to the point that was raised by the appellant about trash coming in from external sources, there were no real impediments or fencing that would prevent access to their property from an adjoining property?
So the fence that I'm referring to that was on the side that is in between the one property that's alleged to be dumping on the subject property, that fence was a non-compliant fence because it was too tall. So as the fence went to the back, it was more than seven feet. We did take a measurement, there's a photo with me, my reach is about 7'1". The fence was taller than 7'1", so it was a very high fence. So that could be a barrier to, possibly be a barrier to dumping from the neighbor.
But that over-tall fence was part of the abatement?
Yes, it was.
So with the removal of that fence, there's literally no barrier at all?
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Yes, there's no barrier at this time.
Thank you.
Any further comments or questions? If you can, I, I'm gonna give you a chance since you're the, you're not the property owner, but you do live there. Please focus on the abatement part itself and keep it short.
Okay, I'd like to know what fence you're talking about. Is it the front fence that's over seven foot?
No, it was the back, well, the front fence was over seven.
Okay, if you're on the one side. If you're on the one side of it, it's, it's legal. On the other side, it's not because there's a hill back behind it. And that's where maybe my quality, my, you know, reading the law, it's supposed to be seven foot or six foot. And, you know, if you, if you're on one side of the hill, you're six foot, and the other side of the hill, it's, you know, it's eight feet, whatever, you know, because there's a drop. Okay, where's that come into play there?
So there's, I'm sorry. So there's two fences that are in, that were part of the abatement here. There is a front fence that Mr. Saunders is referring to that's set back from the property. That can actually go up to seven feet in height under the California Building Code. That fence was taller than seven feet. Also, it was structurally not stable. It was not, it was a safety hazard, it could fall over. It was a, they had basically one fence and then kind of put a six-foot panel and nailed it together on top of another six-foot, or on top of that fence to give it the height it was. So it was not sturdy, it was not structurally stable. The fence that I was referring to is the side fence in between your property and the next, or Ms. Hernandez's property and the next property as you go to the back. Now, that fence is set in the setback. That fence cannot exceed six feet in height. And again, there is a photo where my hand, as a, as a, as a reference, I stand, I put my hand up and the fence is higher than my hand. Again, that fence is in the setbacks, so it cannot exceed six feet in height unless there's, they go through the, the planning department to get some type of use permit to, for it to be allowed.
Okay, that was their fence that they had erected. The neighbors erected that fence. They keep their sheep in, or their lamb, or whatever they were, goats, their goats in at the time. That they had 50 goats in there, in that property before they moved in. And had, they had live animals that they were feeding there, okay? And then that's one thing. You know, and it's like, I've, I've been through all this.
So I, I'm not. I'm gonna interrupt at this moment in time. There is nothing being said that this is not a nuisance, that this is not garbage on the property that was cleaned up. The owner said, yes, this is the property and it was cleaned up. I, I think at this moment in time, we, we need to move forward because no one, nobody is denying that this is the right property and that it was a property with nuisance, it needed to be abated. It was not brought to compliance by the property owners. And I think that's the only things that we are looking at. And Mr. Guintavano, I want to check in with you. As far as the only aspect of what is on the agenda today is whether or not there is any proof or evidence to the contrary of what our code enforcement team is bringing us. This is the right property, this is the right property owner, and there was garbage and nuisance on this property that needed to be abated.
And that is correct. And what's before your board today is whether or not to approve the lien in the amount requested by, by code enforcement staff.
And so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna close this down. We, we all, we, we all have to take care of our properties.
Yes, we do.
Because our properties have a huge impact, not just on our neighbors, but our community, whether it's for a welcoming and nice atmosphere for people to enjoy or a safe atmosphere for people not to have to fear fire or other types of hazards.
I understand that. And my, my question to you is, if these people come over and destroy your property and you, you get tired of it and you've been asking for help. We've been asking for help for what, three years on this?
And, and I.
And we've been asking.
I'm gonna interrupt. That is not, the, the issues of neighbor feuds is not an issue that the Board of Supervisors can take care of. So, but, and if somebody throws soda cans every single day when they walk by my house because they're disrespectful, that's up to me to clean up my yard. If I have an issue with a neighbor, then I have other ways and other means to be able to deal with that. But not through here. So it doesn't matter how those things have occurred. The fact is, it is the situation on the property, it has been abated, and there is no further conversation at this point.
Okay, okay, then that's what I'm trying to get at.
And I hope that you guys can find a way to live amongst each other in that neighborhood in a way that works. But we have to keep a certain level of standard in our community so that we can live a much more enjoyable life.
So charging people for other stuff is okay then, okay? I deal with it, I got it, okay, you got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I speak again?
At this moment, no.
Okay, well, I'm selling my mom's house, so the 20,000, they don't need to move in on my house.
Okay.
My mom's house.
We're done, we're done. Thank you. And looking for any further comments from board members? We had our testimony, so looking for our final action. Anything further before we take our final action?
If I could just add one thing, we have had ongoing discussions with county council about getting more tools in our toolbox to deal with chronic nuisance situations such as this one. For the majority, you know, we, we try to be as efficient with our nuisance abatement budget as possible and spread it out as much as we can. And so it becomes frustrating when we have to continually go back and abate the exact same parcel. So we have been talking to county council about more permanent solutions that, that we can bring onboard so that we don't use an inordinate amount of our budget for nuisance abatement on a single property.
And I know that we did create a specific clause of severe, I don't know if it was severe nuisance or severe hazard, or it was when we were doing our cannabis stuff and it wasn't specific to cannabis, but it was.
High severity violations.
High severity violations. And maybe that's something that we can look at implementing so that the cost of dealing again and again and again can be increased. But obviously, there's other tools in the toolkits as well that you guys are looking at as well. I want to bring it back to the board. And Supervisor Simon, looks like you're ready for the action.
Yeah, obviously ready to support this today. And just to follow up comment that I, I have been out there recently and it's kind of going back into the same form it was before. It's a reality of where we're at with this property. And so I appreciate the neighbors coming in, looking at, you know, who've been out there, been affected by it. You know, so we'll be back here most likely. But today, I'm ready to move, make a motion to approve the lien in the amount of $21,332.44. And I'm not gonna read the breakdowns, that's all right, right? So, and direct staff to record the lien against the property with the Lake County Recorder's Office and deliver the recorded lien to the county auditor who shall enter the amount of the lien on the assessment rule as special assessments.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. So our next timed item is in 15 minutes. We have item 7.2. And then we have items 7, 10, and 11. I wanted to check in with CAO Parker. I don't know if we have folks available for 710 or 711 currently, either in the Zoom room, definitely not in the chamber. And I see that Mr. Rothstein got up, so I'm not sure if he wants to take on 7.2. Let's go ahead and take that on. Consideration of an internal ad hoc committee to review recommendations of the Lake Countywide Community Visioning Forum Planning Committee and Mr. Rothstein.
Good morning, supervisors. Matthew Rothstein, Chief Deputy County Administrative Officer. On Tuesday, June 18, 2024, your board received the final report of the Lake Countywide Community Visioning Forum Planning Committee and directed staff to return today with a recommendation for an ad hoc committee to review the committee's internal and community-facing recommendations, which were found on numbered page 18 of the Lake Countywide Community Visioning Forum Planning Committee's final report. For this short-term purpose, staff recommends your board authorize an internal ad hoc committee comprised of the following. The county administrative officer or her designee, the human resources director or her designee, and the health services director or his designee. And as you will appreciate, keeping committee membership small does not preclude staff from seeking additional perspective as needed. And any recommendations reached by this internal ad hoc will be brought to your board in open session. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much for bringing this back. Any comments or questions? Supervisor Green?
Just wanna give thanks again to Mr. Rothstein for all his hard work during the visioning, planning, committee process. And the recommendations that come in that process were fairly numerous, involving both county-facing issues and external issues. I think this is a great first step toward clarifying some of the county issues we could tackle. And as you stated, nothing in this initial ad hoc would preclude refining it as needed as we go down that road. So very supportive of this.
Thank you. Supervisor Pyska?
And I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to talk to you beforehand. But I was just wondering about the rationale for the health director and when we also have behavioral health and social service issues that maybe we'd like to hold into? And maybe that's something we can get to later and just get this going with just the health director? So I just wanted to hear on how you selected that position.
Yes, so as you may be aware, the health services department does have a permanent position allocation that is primarily focused on health equity. So that is unique to that department. That's why we have a member anticipated from that department for the formal committee at this initial step. And certainly will be consulting with those others you raised as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that. I do have a question for both Vice Chair Crandall and Supervisor Green. You guys were on the visioning committee in the first place, wondering if there's any will or want to continue to be involved in the conversation that eventually does bring back the recommendations to the Board of Supervisors? And my thought process is adding some supervisors to this list of the committee. Right now, it's just staff. But I think that us representing the people of Lake County who have elected us in these positions and that visioning forum being very much about our communities, not just our internal, because there was internal and external recommendations. Just kind of wondering what your thoughts are of joining this committee or if there's a would rather not?
I'm okay with staff's recommendation. I never find myself lacking opportunity to provide input. Sometimes I run into process, but where there's a will, there's a way. And obviously, I'm, I'm on my way out. So just for continuity sake, if we did a point of soup, I would probably throw EJ under the bus. But I, I'm very confident that Deputy CAO Rothstein and, and the delegates that are probably gonna emerge out of this initial, initial task force are gonna have their hands full, if only because EJ and I were there basically for the full process that created the recommendations. And now having some fresh eyes on those recommendations and then bringing it back to the board seems to me to be a good first step. And I think if those initial discussions point out a need for additional departments to get involved or, or a supervisor to sit in, you know, I think we can handle those requests at that time. But I'm not seeing the immediate need for either EJ or I to be on there. But I will defer to Supervisor Crandall.
Yeah, I mean, we were a part of the full visioning forum and basically when they're finished, they're gonna come back to us anyhow. So I mean, for me, I think it's okay for them to take care of this list or, you know, these recommendations, bring them back to us. Because I just, I don't know, I mean, if I, let's say hypothetically, I do join and then I'm basically speaking on the board's behalf or whatever the case may be. I mean, there might be a concern later that I did, you know, I did something of the like. So I'd rather just it come back to us where we could all be together and I'm not speaking on behalf of all the rest of my colleagues.
Okay. Appreciate the response. And I'm okay with moving forward as it is, just wanted to offer that and see. Didn't want to take away the work that you've already done to begin with as that work has been going on for quite some time already. If there's nothing further, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. If there's nothing further, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this item? No one from the public in the chamber or the Zoom room? And I think all you need is consensus, or do we want to do it by motion?
I see a recommended motion. So if it's okay, I move to authorize creation of an internal ad hoc committee as described within the staff report, and provide direction to staff to review the recommendations of the Lake County Community Visioning Forum Planning Committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Rothstein. We are going to move on to, I heard a click though, so I'm going to pause. CAO Parker?
Yes, Director March is here for his item, and Mr. Weatherby is on his way.
Perfect, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So we're going to take up item 7.11, Consideration of Plans and Specifications for the 2024 Pavement Rehabilitation Project Bid Number 24-39. Director March?
Good afternoon, or good morning, Chair Sabatier and board members. DPW staff has prepared plans and specifications for the rehabilitations of streets in the Cobb Mountain area. If the act, if today's board action is approved, the city, the staff will advertise the project in the local paper, submit the advertisement today, and move forward with bidding the project February, I'm sorry, the 16th, and open bids on August 16th, and hopefully award the construction contract shortly afterwards, approximately two weeks after. Our plan is to rehabilitate the streets moving from north to south, and the rehabilitation is it's pulverizing the existing AC pavement and creating a new base layer, and then placing between two and a half to three inches of new asphalt on top of the base layer. The, there was an attachment to the item today which identified all the streets. The plans are complete. I do need to do some minor adjustments to the technical specifications, or the front end, and that will be prepared prior to the 16th of this month. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments? Supervisor Pyska?
Yeah, I mean, we're very excited for this project, but I do want to point out that there are a couple areas that the roads are not included, and that's because of other utility work with the water company and PG&E. So those roads are still in the plan as we approved last year, it's just we have to wait until that other work is done.
That's correct. Thank you for reminding everyone.
And just a quick question, I don't believe I saw it in the memo, I'm trying to bring it up right now. Do you know how many miles approximately of roadway we're looking at?
16.
I hope that you will get good bids. I know it's a little late in the season, but I'm keeping my fingers crossed because I know the city of Clear Lake also did a pretty late bid. I think theirs went out in June, or maybe it was late May and they opened it up in June, but they actually got some really good bids for their project. And so I'm going to keep my fingers crossed if the same thing happens here, so we can keep moving forward. Any further comments, questions? Let's go ahead.
Just positive comment, obviously. Excited to vote on this today, it's the first step in our 10-year road plan that we're doing there, so I know you've got a lot of work to do in the future, but great step today, taking, taking one forward here, so excited to vote on it.
Right.
And I must say, all the credit belongs to Scott DeLeon, who shepherded this project through the design phase, so.
Takes a team. Takes a team. All right, thank you very much. Let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Anyone wish to speak on this item? I see no one in the board chambers and no one in the Zoom room looking for action.
I move that we, let's see, approve the plans and specifications as modified and approved by Public Works Director, and authorize Public Works Director Assistant Purchasing Agent to advertise for bids for construction.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Have a great day.
And let's go ahead and take up 7.10, just in time. Consideration of Request to Close Environmental Health Office on Fridays Beginning July 12, 2024 Through February 28, 2025. Mr. Weatherby. Good morning.
Good morning. How you guys doing today?
Good.
Do I have a happy board to talk to today? I know you guys had a really busy schedule, you need to talk to Susan about that. What are you doing to these folks?
You know, you're on the schedule.
And I'm happy about it. So yes, I'm bringing forward to you today a request to close the Environmental Health Office on Fridays. The request is amended, we didn't get it in in time for the amendment, but it's only half-days on Fridays, from noon to 5:00. And this is to support the new software that's being installed right now. We're done with the configuration phase, and we're getting ready to enter into the training and the testing phase of the software. And in order to do that, we need time to be able to focus on the needs of that software, and we find it very difficult to do that while also servicing the many phone calls that we get. We're hoping that by reducing it to half-day on Friday, the public can still get the things they need to get done in environmental health, just in a smaller amount of time, and then we can focus on getting this software rolled out. The focus of the software is all about efficiency for us and for the public. Much of what's being done is something we don't have in our capacity right now, which is the public portal. And by moving a lot of this information to the public portal, we're hoping that people will be able to access information faster and cheaper for them, so they don't have to pay for our time to look stuff up, they can look it up themselves and get the information that they need. I know our realtor community will probably murder me if I don't make this happen, but that's the ultimate function, is to try and facilitate that.
We will try to keep you safe from that.
Please don't let me get murdered.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Any comments or questions? Supervisor Green?
Well, just in the interest of not having your staff murder you, why not offer the software training in the morning and have your public-facing stuff in the afternoon? I'm just, I'm not second-guessing, I'm just curious. If I were a staffer, I'd rather, I'd probably rather tackle it in the morning and cruise out for the public-facing stuff in the afternoon.
That's, it's, we could do that if that's a preference. However, our standing meeting with the software developer is at 10:00 AM every morning, and that's the meeting that I'm in, and that's where I would get my guidance to direct my staff on what needs to be done for that week. So having that meeting as a standing meeting, it's just, the timeline's up better if we close in the afternoon.
Thank you.
Any further comments or questions? So I know that I did speak with Director Arton regarding my concerns on this. I think that changing software is important, I think that training is important, but I know that we worked hard to try to reopen all of our offices because we were all closed on Fridays. As I stated back then, that's 20% of our work week. Granted, now you're telling me it's the 10% because it's half of a day, but I also know that CDD is getting new software, we're working on new software for our overall accounting software, for some of our major operations, and our auditor controller, and property taxes, and so on and so forth. I know I will not be the most popular person for saying so, but I think, I know I've gone through some software upgrades, granted, I'm not going to speak that I know what this upgrade looks like, but there's got to be a way to minimize the public facing and still have the public facing be available. I think we are a public service, and that we should not, I know that you are offering that there can be appointments, that there can be other things, but I think we should be able to be completely open to the public Monday through Friday, and just find ways to work around it, especially as I look at the timeframe, we're talking about eight months, so three quarters of a year, to be away from providing that service to the public. And so I'd love to see a different option, and we'll see how the board chooses to move forward. I just feel if we say yes today, we're going to get some other requests from others as they also go through some software upgrades as well, and I want to make sure we treat everybody the same, and so I'm a little concerned about saying yes.
May I speak to that?
Please.
So something that's kind of important to understand, this is not a normal duty, this is not something that's part of our normal, everyday operation. This is literally a one in, once in a decade event that we change software. We've been holding on to our current software long past its usable time window, so we're not, the ability to take on additional work, which this is, is additional work, we just need some space to be able to conduct those operations and get this done. I'm looking to make this as, efficiency's key, but it's got to be done right, and I'm willing to stretch it out to make sure we do it right, so that we have a better product in the end for us and for our clients as well. That's why it's the eight-month. The likelihood of needing the full eight months is, quite frankly, remote, but I've extended it out to the termination of our current software. We will likely be done long before then, but I put it out there just as the hard cutoff date, that's why we're looking at February. We would only use this during the period in which we need it, which is during this conversion phase, specifically the testing phase.
Okay, thank you very much. Supervisor Pyska?
Yeah, and these migrations are very difficult and tricky, and I've been part of failed migrations that take decades to clean up, so.
I really don't want to do that.
Right, and so I'm okay with the half-day, I'm glad to see that changed, because a full day is really tough for the public. It's a few hours, once a week, and I think that's an investment to make sure that we do get it done right the first time, and don't have any lasting implications, because that is just the worst kind of disaster to clean up.
Yeah. Obviously, I'm in support of it too. You know, anytime you're changing over these new systems, training the folks that are going to be working with it are so important, you know, it could have long-term damage if we don't. And, you know, since I've sat on the board here in eight years, I know there's been some, in different departments, you know, where they brought in a program and needed a long-term training and other stuff like that, it didn't happen right at the beginning. So I think being proactive is the right way to do it. I understand your concern about the public there, but I know if that happens, I'd appreciate that you would come back and say, hey, you know, maybe it isn't working out this way, and we're going to do something different, but I'm ready to move forward with it today, because I think it's the right way to start out with this transition.
Appreciate that.
All right, Supervisor Green?
Just if you could, 30-second elevator speech, because I'm guessing this software is not only be super useful for internal tracking and cases and what have you, there's probably a public-facing aspect too.
Yes.
For permit registration. So I'm just kind of reminded of the city of Lakeport's recent migration to OpenGov, and they're not open at all on Fridays, and so I'm pointing that out, because even in this particular project, the reduction of staff availability during certain hours is going to be offset to a large extent by having greater tools available online. But going back to the city of Lakeport is maybe a poor example. Part of what you need is not just learning the software and managing your case flows internally, but inventing what a good-looking, public-facing workflow is. And using OpenGov again as kind of a poor example, it does work, but I'm the first crotchety old man to sit there at the front counter saying, what do you mean, I have to sit here and talk to this computer instead of a staff person? It's like, no, you'll love it. And 20 screens later, I finally managed to buy a business license. So I think not only does staff need time and space to understand the internal workings of it, but they really need to be able to have time to beta-test their public-facing aspects of the software and refine any workflows, because once they unleash this on the public, it may be just smooth as stuff, or there may be public people, hopefully not looking to murder you, but expressing some discontent with the new workflows and the new software. It may not be especially intuitive. So the more time you can spend on not just refining your internal workflows, but understanding how the public is going to embrace this or not, I think is time well spent.
So if I can, speaking specifically to that, yes, the 30-second elevator pitch for the public-facing portal, I long for a day when you can do all of your government business work in your robe on Saturday morning with a cup of coffee in your hand, and go log online, get your permit, get it done, turn in all your documents, or look up your own septic system. And I need to know where to send my pumpers to pump this out. You can look that up. That's ultimately the goal, is to make all information in environmental health publicly accessible immediately, no longer being hidden behind us having to spend days and times looking at records that are on paper. It's great that we have them, but it's hard to manage them, and it costs people a lot of time and a lot of money waiting for us to find those records. And that's the ultimate goal, is to make a public portal that's usable. I can't promise what it's going to be yet, because I don't know what it looks like. We don't have a public portal, we're building it from scratch with this software company, but that's the goal.
That was definitely around the 30-second mark.
I'm doing my best.
Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. See no hands in the Zoom room. Please come on up.
I'm Joan Moss, and I want to tell you that Mr. Weatherby came through for me. The people at his office had a good, had a good answer, and he came out to my property, and he fixed everything. I mean, what he me, he needs is what he says he needs. So I want to put in a good word for Mr. Weatherby and the Environmental Health Department. He's, he's just great. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment, positive feedback.
I'll take it.
And I think we've all seen Mr. Weatherby out there during emergencies, during non-emergencies, and always appreciate the work that you do out there. Let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Move to approve the request to close Environmental Health Office on half-days for Fridays Beginning July 12, 2024 Through February 28, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck with the transition. All right, we're going to take up our 1130 item, which just disappeared on me. Where are we here? There we go. TEFRA Public Hearing, Consideration of Conduit Financing for the Caritas Affordable Housing Project. CAO Parker?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Mr. Connor O'Brien is here to speak, to introduce and speak to this item.
We are here this morning to conduct a public hearing pursuant to the Federal Tax, Equity, and Fiscal Responsibility Act, or TEFRA. TEFRA requires that a public hearing be held by the governing body of the jurisdiction in which a project to be financed with tax-exempt financing is located, and that the governing body approve the proposed financing. Caritas Affordable Housing Incorporated has asked that the California Municipal Finance Authority, the CMFA, be the issuer of tax-exempt financing in an amount not to exceed $166 million. A portion of the proceeds of the bonds in a principal amount not expected to exceed $11,500,000 will be used for the financing and refinancing all or a portion of the costs of the acquisition, construction, improvement, and equipping of a 67-space mobile home park known as Sterling Shores Estates Manufactured Housing Community located at 5830 Robin Hill Drive. The California Municipal Finance Authority is a joint powers authority formed to assist local governments, nonprofit organizations, and businesses with the issuance of both taxable and tax-exempt debt. The debt to be issued by the CMFA will be the sole responsibility of the borrower, and the county will have no financial or legal obligations or responsibilities with regard to the repayment of the debt. All financing documents will carry disclaimers that the loan is not an obligation of the county. The county will also bear no costs in the issuance of the proposed debt, this is a private loan with the borrower in their bank. It is recommended that the Board of Supervisors adopt a resolution approving the issuance of bonds by the CMFA for the borrower. Such adoption is solely for the purposes of satisfying the requirements of the TEFRA Code and the California Government Code, Section 6500. There's also a representative from Caritas on Zoom if you have any questions related specifically to the project, and I'm from the CMFA if there's any financing-related questions.
Thank you very much for your summary. Are there any questions or comments? Supervisor Green?
Just a question, I know this is just kind of going through the motions, but on the Sterling Shores Estates in North Lakeport, which is in my district, is this just a total refi, or is there going to be any improvements funded by this? to be any improvements funded by this refi?
Yeah, in some of the documents, it notes that there will be improvements not limited to repaving some of the surfaces, but it's primarily for refinancing.
Thank you.
So I do have some questions. I, I feel like there's a lot of lacking information. In fact, I was not aware that we're part of this large Northern California group to approve these things and $166 million is a lot of money. And while we as a county, as far as what I see on documents, will not be held responsible for any of the funding and the bond, who is overall held responsible if things default and do not end up in the positive way that you're looking to go?
Yeah, it's the responsibility of the borrower and the CMFA. And that's like in the, what I'm talking about in the debt is to be issued by the CMFA and is the sole responsibility of the borrower and the county will have no financial or legal obligations with regards to that debt.
But aren't we a member of the CMFA?
Yes. But you're not, like the, if something was to happen, and we've done hundreds of these projects and financings, if something is to happen where a project defaults, which has happened nearly zero times, it's responsibility of the borrower and they'll just swap out the borrower with someone else to, to manage the project, but the county is not responsible financially for any of the debt.
So one of my concerns that I looked at is I, I feel like, yes, you're going to each member of the CMFA to approve, but my approval is also approving something that would be happening in other counties because you're not asking for the portion of Lake County, for the Sterling Housing Project, but for all housing projects in other counties as well. I feel like there's a lack of detail of specifically what will be happening to that one project. You mentioned roads, but I don't know which ones. I know when I looked at the project, it looks like it could use a secondary emergency exit since there's only one way in, one way out right now and dealing with fires. That's something that's definitely concerning. But I know that based on the information provided, I, I don't feel comfortable in saying yes to such a large number for something that I'm not fully aware of 100% exactly what I'm approving, especially for other counties as well.
So we've held these TEFRA hearings in all of the other counties or cities where parts of the, the larger amount is taking place. So this is specifically for the portion of the project that's taking place inside Lake County, that $11,500,000 at the Sterling Shores Project. If you have questions specifically about what they're doing at that project, you can ask the representative from Caritas on the Zoom call, but the primary, this project was already exists and was approved in 2014 and built, and this is just to refinance those original bonds. But this was an existing project that was already approved and you're not approving the whole 166 million. We go to each different county, district or city where those other parts of the project exist.
If we were the only ones to say no and everyone else said, or if we were the only ones to say yes and everyone else said no, it would still move forward for the County of Lakes portion, or does it need a majority of the counties that represent CMFA to say yes?
I'm not familiar exactly with how that situation would go. If, we'd ask that you not say no if you have issues with it. We would just continue it to a, a later meeting so we can get those, those questions answered. But we can go just to higher levels, like approval. We try and do it at the lowest level with the county, but if there's a, a larger body. So like we originally tried to go to the city of Lakeport, but this project is specifically in the county of Lakes. So we came to you guys, we try and go at the lowest level, but these projects can be approved at the state level. Oh, just we asked to go, like doing the common courtesy of asking that you guys are aware of the, the project because it's in, inside of your borders. But yes, that the other counties have all approved their, their projects.
Well, I, I like to express myself as to how and why I vote, and today I, I will not be voting for this. I just feel like this is very rubber stamp type of process where I'm not given enough information to be given a, a good reason to vote yes on this. I know that it's been a little bit of a push and shove to get this in front of us. And I, I, I know that our staff has been dealing with this and I, I would have liked a better process, more information, but it just feels like $166 million, that a phone call and a conversation and a better understanding. But the details remain very limited in my opinion. And so at this moment in time, I'm just not comfortable moving forward, but we'll see what the rest of the board says. So thank you.
Okay. And if, if there is, if you're going to disprove that and we would just, just ask that you continue it to a, a later board meeting, there's just issues if it's disapproved with how long it takes to get things rescheduled.
And again, we'll see what the rest of the board says. I'm just giving you my personal opinion. Supervisor Green?
Thank you for the comments. I'd like to share some of the concerns. This is a, a new process to me, but to the specific concerns you raised, I'm looking to the 2013, Resolution 2013-135, which is in the agenda packet. And at that time, the board did approve a project that included not just the project in my district, but several other projects around the state. So this formula has been followed before by this board. What's before this board today appears to follow that same formula, weird as it may be. I think our job here is primarily ministerial in nature. And as was pointed out, the county itself bears no financial risk in this except tangentially through its involvement in CMFA. And I, I'm confident that this is going to move ahead correctly. The 2013 resolution was about 77 million. This is 166. So clearly the numbers are bigger and the number of projects are bigger, but it seems like we're following the same formula we did roughly 10 years ago. So I'll be supporting it.
Thank you for your comment. If there's nothing further, let's go ahead and open it up for public. And we do have Jared Suzuki.
He's from the CMFA, so he's just also observing, but.
I, yes, I would just like to note that John Woolley from the borrower, Caritas Corporation is on if there are any questions regarding the details of the project and, for example, the improvements to be made. He could be made a panelist and address any concerns and questions regarding the project specifics. I would, just wanted to make note of that.
Thank you, Mr. Suzuki. We're bringing John in as a panelist. And John, if you could provide some, a little bit more detail on the project.
Good morning. My name is John Woolley. I'm the Chief Investment Officer for the Caritas Corporation. I was involved in the initial TEFRA hearing up in Lake County, or this, maybe it was the city of Lake some 10 years ago. And it went, it went very well. There seems to be some confusion, and I'm sorry, on my screen, I can't see what your names are, but to, to the board, this is simply refinancing a, a, a bond that, that happened. And the second supervisor, again, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but you, you, you characterized it the, the same way that it exists. And that is that it's an administrative task and part of the challenge is, and somebody from CMFA can correct me if I'm wrong, but you all are part of the League of or something, which is the, the entity that puts the umbrella around this. And it's administrative task. Part of it is the Caritas is a 501(c)(3) corporation. And this is to shine light on, on scrupulous people that may be trying to get around this kind of financing. We've been involved in, Caritas has been involved since 1995. We have 28 parks in California, another seven up in Oregon. And every time we go through financing, we have to go between in front of cities and counties. And if, in, in my 11 years of being with Caritas, if this measure isn't passed, it'd be the first time there was ever an objection. Most of the time, and I'm not saying that you're doing anything wrong, it's just that you're aware that we've applied for this financing. I think that some of you are familiar with the park. It's a very nice park. It provides a tremendous service for the residents that live there. And Caritas's mission is to afford affordable housing in perpetuity. And how we do that is with this fixed rate bond financing. And it allows the people to live in a park with below-market rents and with below-market rent increases. And this is how we, we service the people. And unfortunately, one of the things that the law has required is this hearing, but I've sat in on 15 of these over my time, and I've never had anybody even object. So if you have a specific question or supervisor, if you, there's more information you need, we certainly can provide that to you. I would assume we would move forward. I, I don't know what happens if you turn it down, but we'd be good for another 10 to 12 years and we'll be back and do it again. Or I won't be, I'm too old, but somebody will be back again to tell you that we're finding, I think this is how we grow. We have 4,500 spaces throughout our, our organization and, and until there's not a need for affordable housing, we will continue doing this. We have never even been late on a payment, let alone missed a payment in all of our years of existence. So if there's more you want to know, if you want to go on our website, we actually post our audited financials and have for every year, and we're just completing the 2023 financials, and they should be posted in the next couple of weeks. And it's a, it's a very strong organization. And I'll stop talking because I don't want to bore anybody.
Well, thank you very much, John. I am going to move on to, we have Dana Kojo Karu Ivozka. I apologize if I butchered that last name.
Hello, my name is Dana Kojo Karo Ivozka, and I am with DA Davidson Corporation, which is the underwriter for the Caritas financing. And another point I would like to add is the Sterling Shore Estates, as, as my, as John mentioned, this was part of 2014 financing. And financing that we are contemplating this year is to refund those bonds for savings. So the interest rates in, currently in the market are beneficial to, to refunding for savings. So that's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There was a mention that this is, creates low-income housing for perpetuity. I thought it was a certain percentage that was meant to be at a certain amount and the rest was not necessarily under that percentage. Am I incorrect on that? Because actually I am looking right here. Not less than 20% of the residential units of the Sterling Shores Project shall be occupied with, by individuals whose income is 50% or less of area median gross income.
And sir, we, we audit that every year. And if the board so chooses, we can automatically notify you every year what percentage of the people fall below that level. We do it on all of our parks. So it's, we're not doing anything special for you, it's just that nobody's ever asked us. We need it internally to make sure that our bonds are in compliance. But if this is the, the data point you'd like to know, we certainly can make that available to you.
And no, I just wanted a clarification based on the comment that I had heard. So I appreciate, I appreciate the response.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? I see no further hands up in the Zoom room and nobody in the chamber. Please come on up. Joan?
Joan Moss, I think we need affordable housing, but I think we need safe affordable housing. And if Bruno said that there are not two entrances and two exits to each, each building, we need to look into that. The people in California need to look into it. Lake County lost 60% of their property at the Valley Fire. That's important. And we need to be able to enter and leave every building and every house. The people of California do need two entrances, an entrance and an exit to every house. And if it doesn't have it, it needs to be changed. Thank you.
I need to clarify that I am not a planner or a, a person who builds subdivisions or anything like that. So my comment was just a layman perspective of what I saw, not something that has to be or anything like that. I just want to clarify that. I see no further hands up and no further hands in Zoom, and so bringing it back to the board for action.
I offer the resolution.
The resolution has been offered.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Hi.
Supervisor Green?
Hi.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Nay. All right. Resolution passes. Thank you very much.
Just reading the, just real quick, I was reading the old resolution that was passed in 13 and it passed 5-0.
Yeah.
So.
So we have item at 1:00 PM. We have our calendars and we have our closed session checking in with the board. It's 11:57. Do we want to take a lunch and come back at 1:00 PM and reconvene?
Yep.
I'm getting a lot of nods, so we go, we will go ahead and take a break and reconvene at 1:00 PM to finish up our open session and go into closed session after that. So we'll see you at 1:00. All right, welcome back. We are going to continue. We have two more open session items. Our first item is 6:10 or 1:00 PM, 1:00 PM aratum. I'm very tired and I apologize. Consideration of medical carrier change from Anthem Blue Cross to Blue Shield with the PPO Navigator. And B, consideration of dental carrier change from Delta Dental to Ameritas. And we have our human resources team and more. Come on up, please.
Hello, I'm Pam Samak, Human Resources Director, and I'd like to introduce you to Arandi Campbell. Campbell. I'm apparently tired too.
We were in the same place last night.
Who is our senior HR analyst and our benefit specialist. And she's going to introduce Alliant and answer any of your questions.
Hi, my name is Arandi Campbell, Human Resources Analyst, and my primary duties within the HR department include the benefit administration section. So I'll be doing the quick introduction and Alliant is here to present the item. I want to thank them for coming here today. I know it was quite a drive from the Bay Area, and they have been a tremendous support over the years when it comes to health benefits. They keep us really in compliance with all rules, regulations, and there is a lot of work when it comes to health benefits that's done behind the scenes. So thanks. So the benefits committee comprised of various members from our union, reviewed our healthcare benefits, and after extensive analysis, have voted on changing from Anthem Blue Cross to Blue Shield with the PPO Navigator program. And what the Blue Shield PPO Navigator program, they have a new program called Accolade. And Accolade really replaces that traditional customer service section and making it more of a member concierge, meaning employees are able to call, accolade directly, schedule appointments, get recommendations on whether, where doctors are located with more cost-effectiveness. There would be no rate increase if we do change from Anthem Blue Cross to Blue Shield. We also reviewed our dental plan and the, the benefits committee also wants to transition from Delta Dental to Ameritas. And over the years, we've seen a lot of deep increase in dentist providers that are falling out of the Delta Dental network. And Ameritas has a unique way of paying the dental, the dentist directly. So currently employees are having to pay upfront for those services and trying to get reemb get reimbursement through Delta Dental. So Emeritas would actually pay the dentist provider directly. And they do this neat thing where it would be a 90th percentile of usual and customary fees. So the dentist will get that nine what nine out of 10 dentists are paying for that particular service. So there is a rate increase of 0.3%, but Delta Dental is 0.9% for the renewal. So now I'll pass it over to Tom Shear and Chloe Smith.
Okay, hi there. My name's Tom Shear. I'm a benefits consultant with Alliant and had the privilege of working with the county since 2010. You all are part purchased these programs in collaboration with other cities and counties through the PRISM Joint Powers Authority. Used to be called California State Association of Counties, EIA. So it was CSAC EIA. They have a fancy new name. Part of the of our role is to figure out solutions for members of this program, whether they are urban, rural, semi-urban, wherever they happen to be located. And challenges of access to care are pretty common outside the major metropolitan areas. The way PRISM is trying to address this, and the biggest health plan in the state, CalPERS, is following our lead starting in January, is to offer a program that gives additional support to your folks to find care and makes additional virtual care options available. There's two parts, the agenda on slide two there. We're going to talk a little bit, there you go, about the medical and dental options in the materials that went out in your packet. There's a lot, there's the data that's in the appendix, which gave a lot more detail about you get an app that has all the information in it. There's a lot of additional information. And I'm going to let Chloe take the next part.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Hi, everybody. My name's Chloe. I'm your account executive. I work closely with Tom and very closely with the benefits team day to day on all your benefits here at the county. I've been had the pleasure of working with the county now for about six years, ever since I've been here at Alliant. And today, what we're going to talk about first to give you a little context about the health plan renewal over the last few years before we get into some of the changes that are being recommended. So what this chart shows is the renewal rate history over the course of the last, you know, 15 years back to 2011. And the across, starting from the left to the right, you can see Lake County's specific renewal increase percentages over the years. Next column is PRISM Health, so that's the joint purchasing program that Tom mentioned that the county currently is a member of and purchases your health and dental and life insurance through. The third column is California PPO Trend, which is essentially medical inflation, so the cost year over year to deliver healthcare. That's what that number represents. And the last column is CalPERS, which is a kind of a benchmark for public sector clients. So you can see at the bottom is really the long-term average. So really, the benefit of being a part of one of these joint purchasing pools is you're able to have sort of long-term stability, the lowest cost, the lowest administrative fees by being a part of this program with 41,000, 43,000 other employees participating in the health program and 45-ish other cities, counties, and special districts that you're a part of this program with. And then you can see PRISM Health, their average is 5.6. So within the PRISM Health pool, there's members like Lake County get can get a slight adjustment over what the pool recommended increase is based on your specific claims history. So if the if the county's claims history is running better than the pool, you can get a decrease, a lower rate than the pool, which you can see, for example, in 2017, the county got a negative 0.3 versus PRISM Health was 2.4. And then you can see this year in 2025, the county actually got a higher increase based on the claims experience within the county compared to PRISM. And then, you know, the, as I mentioned, the bottom line is really the overall average. So you can see that you're able to have increases are hard. Obviously, we don't want to discount that any increases is an increase and it's a cost. But to be able to beat, you know, be lower than PPO Trend, which is medical inflation, is a good thing. So that's the benefit of kind of being part of this pool. And then you can see CalPERS PPO is about 6.7%. Their increases are not final yet for 2025, so it says pending there. But the PPO plans are increasing this year at 10% and 12% depending on the plan. And then this chart gives you an overview of the all of your health plan renewals. So as I mentioned, the 9.3% is for medical. Dental, as Arandi mentioned, is just under 1% if you make no changes, slightly less if you go with the Emeritus option that was recommended. And then VS, the Vision, Life, and EAP are all not changing rates this year, so there's no rate impact there. And this chart so gives you an idea of the cost for the employee. So down at the left column, you see 0000, that's the employee's portion of the premium that would need to be paid. So in January of 2023, the county was able to increase the health plan contribution towards employees to 1,500. So the good news is this that amount still covers a single employee for medical dental vision vision coverage with with no out-of-pocket. If you have a dependent, spouse, child on the plan, there is a cost associated with that. All right, I will turn it back over to you, Tom, to talk about the new recommended program.
So there are the idea of having what can you do to help people get better care without getting into a complicated discussion with your unions about having higher deductibles, big plan design changes, benefit changes, out-of-pocket changes, things like that. What we've what has evolved in the health insurance space over the last few years is an upgrade in the customer service function. Today, if you call Anthem, the person you're calling, their job title is Customer Service Rep. If you call Accolade, their job title is Health Assistant. They're about to change that to Care Advocate. So just the names alone show you the difference in focus of what is intended to happen by the people that your employees and their dependents will interact with on the phone. We are adding Accolade to the PRISM program, and we're putting it on top of the Blue Shield platform because Blue Shield is much more easily integrated with Accolade's functions. The Accolade customer reps will see all of your members' data when they call in. They're going to know when they've been to the doctor and what meds they're taking and so forth, and they'll be able to point out additional things that they might need to do to take better care of themselves. To move to Blue Shield and add Accolade does not change your rates. We expect this to be cost neutral. We're optimistic that it will actually save money as people get better care over time. However, we feel that the conservative approach is to price it at a neutral standpoint. There are no deductibles, coinsurance changes in your existing plan, so you didn't have to go to the table and bargain a different set of benefits among the four flavors of coverage that you offer now under Anthem. The the next slide talks about what the key elements are of Accolade. If you go to a cocktail party and somebody says, hey, what do you do for a living? And you say, I sell health insurance. Nobody wants to talk to you. They stop, they look past you and they want to talk to somebody else. Nobody likes to deal with health insurance. It's not fun. It's not something people are familiar with. It's not something they're comfortable with. The consequences of doing it wrong can be significant. The consequences of not paying attention to how the coverage works can be can be awful, and it can delay getting care sometimes. Part of what the goal here is, we want to make it simpler, better experience for the for your employees and dependents, more access to care. We cannot hire doctors and move them to Lake County. We can't, as consultants or as a JPA, get more hospital beds into the county. What we can do is increase access to primary care and mental health care on the telephone or by helping your folks get appointments quicker, sooner, as wherever it might be available for a face-to-face. We're going to have more data about quality available to your folks, so they will get recommended to the best quality opportunity. And it's going to make it easier for your HR folks to cope with with what is the calls that come from employees about how things work. The next slide is just a quick look at who all the people are that might end up talking to your people on the phone. It starts with the Health Assistant. The Health Assistant is the single point of contact. Your folks can call in, get the name of John or Sarah, and they will continue to work with John or Sarah or any of the other folks over time, so they don't have to constantly call in and talk to somebody new. Text is available. You can contact them via text. There is an Accolade app that will have all of the county's benefits in it. It will have all of the contact information for Accolade there. The assistants can answer coverage questions, they can find providers, they can make appointments for folks and figure out claims questions. We know Accolade works because we have been told that when we have it in place, the health plans get lots and lots of calls from Accolade. And that's what happens is Accolade is sitting there on top of the Blue Shield system, and if something isn't working in Blue Shield, Accolade's going to make sure it works. There is triage and referral to the people at the top of the chart. There are virtual primary care physicians. There can be brought on to a call a registered nurse if the question is beyond the immediate expertise of the Health Assistant. If it looks like some mental health care is available, a referral can be made and a subsequent appointment made for a therapist to talk to someone over the phone or video. There is also access to other programs available through PRISM for second surgical opinion, for specialized cancer care, for specialized care for musculoskeletal conditions. The Health Assistant operates as the facilitator, the gateway, the enabler to help your folks get access to all of these advantages. The big question is, in changing to Blue Shield, what does that mean in terms of your network? We took a look at it, and all of the hospitals in the county and all the medical groups are in network with Blue Shield, just as they are with Anthem. There's no no change there.
I just have a question. What about the others that are hospitals like in Santa Rosa?
Yes, they're also, yes. Blue Shield has a big statewide network that is comparable to the Anthem network. To to help you feel comfortable with it, January 1, CalPERS is moving 450,000 human beings from Anthem to Blue Shield. They have decided that they are firing Anthem, and they are moving all of their preferred provider option, all their fee-for-service people from Anthem to Blue Shield. They did a very, they did an exhaustive network analysis, and there's plenty of access.
So Blue Shield's expanded their network because it wasn't that long ago that you couldn't find a provider in the county.
Right. Yes, they have. And we've done detailed location by location and facilities, and also detailed doctor by doctor for the top 30 of both in in numbers of claims and dollars. The next slide has some numbers, and I apologize for it being the numbers being so small. The this was 1,673 records that we looked at to compare the left column, which is Anthem, to the right column, which is Blue Shield. And the percentage of physicians in network, it's 96% on the Anthem side, and 92, it's a little lower on Blue Shield. And some of those lower were out of area. It was interesting, there you there are some like Southern California claims, and there's some from somebody, a couple of people. Hospital facility on the second row down, Anthem, it's 96% in network, Blue Shield's 98%. And ancillary, Anthem 80 and Blue Shield 85. In dollars is the next one. So physician dollars is halfway down the page. 98% of the Anthem dollars were in network and Blue Shield 95, almost 96%. Hospital dollars, 99 and 99. And ancillary, meaning not doctors, not hospitals, so labs, x-rays, that kind of stuff, 86. And Blue Shield is actually higher in network for ancillary than Anthem is. And then there's a little summary down at the bottom that covers that. It is a big deal to change networks. We absolutely understand that. People are going to get new ID cards. The good thing about the new ID card is it's going to have the Accolade phone number on it. So they're going to have, in addition to the, there's the regular Blue Shield service, but Accolade's going to be the primary point of contact. And their job is to facilitate the transition and make it easier for folks to find people and find care. That's the we can take questions. I think we're supposed to do that at the end, but if you have more questions, we can can do that when you're ready. Keep going.
All right. So now I'm going to talk a little bit about the dental plan. So since I've worked with the county, maybe one or two years after, so probably for the last four years or so, there have been many, many employee concerns about Delta's network, about availability of dentists. And this is not unique to the county of Lake. We're hearing this actually throughout all of California, especially in our rural, you know, rural areas. But even Sonoma County is really struggling now. So there has been a shift in the way that Delta does their contracting and the number of providers that they have. And so what this chart shows is on the left is 2019, showing how many employees and dependents of Lake County went either in-network or out-of-network. So the green line is the combination of both Delta networks. So in 2019, you had about 95% of all people were able to see an in-network dentist, and only about five were having to see an out-of-network dentist. Fast forward to 2023, that number has shifted dramatically. Now there's about a quarter of your population who is seeing out-of-network dentists. And what that means for them is they're paying a lot more out-of-pocket. So as Arandi mentioned in the beginning, with Delta Dental, the way that they the way that their contracts are set up, if you go to an out-of-network dentist, the member, me, I go to the dentist, I have to pay the full price of my care, and then I submit a claim and I get reimbursed from Delta. And so, you know, that can be very challenging for people. If you have a claim, a crown or something expensive, that could be $1,200 that you're having to pay upfront and wait for reimbursement. That's really tough for people, and it is probably leading to people either not getting the care that they need. It can be very frustrating to find a dentist. And so, you know, the concern is that people aren't going to the dentist and using their benefits. Like Tom was talking about in the beginning, you know, access to care is such an important issue. And in both of these areas, we're really just trying to find a solution that will help ease the pain that people are feeling. So we, you know, our role, as Tom said, is to try to find some creative options. And so what the the main differences that you would see with Emeritus versus Delta Dental is that Emeritus will pay those dentists, whether they're in-network or out-of-network, pay them directly. So I take my son to an out-of-network dentist, I go in, they say, okay, we think your charge is going to be $20. I pay my $20. They send the claim to Delta, and then if there's any additional amount, they bill me. But I'm not having to come up with that full amount upfront. So that's the biggest difference with Emeritus. The other difference that Arandi talked about in the beginning is that they're going to pay those out-of-network dentists more. So right now, Delta pays about, what, five out of 10 dentists charged? So if an average dentist charges $150, you know, Delta's going to pay less, whereas Emeritus is going to pay based on what nine out of 10 dentists charge. So if the majority of dentists charge $150 for a claim here, a crown, for example, in Lake County, that's what Emeritus is going to pay. So both of those things help the employee pay less out-of-pocket. So there were several options that were presented to the Benefits Committee. If you stay with Delta Dental, the increase is just under 1%. There were two options presented. Option one would be just to match the benefits exactly that you have today with the differences I've outlined, changing the out-of-network reimbursement to a higher amount. Option two adds a little bit of an extra benefit, and it would be slightly over your current but less than the renewal, so very small dollars. But it allows people to roll over unused benefits. So if I have, you know, $1,000 maximum, and I just go get my cleaning, for example, and I have some leftover money, I could roll it over to the next month and be able to have more to use next year if I, you know, have a bigger expense. So you can roll over your rear up to a maximum. So that's a nice added benefit. And, you know, it's pretty inexpensive to add that little change. And that was actually what the benefits committee recommended. So the last slide here, before we get to any questions, is we looked at the top 34 dental providers that the county employees and dependents are currently using. And we've separated them out here into a chart. So you can see Delta and Ameritas share eight of those top 34. So everybody would be able to have the same dentist there. Ameritas would add four more that you don't currently have of those top 34. Delta still does have more in network. So they have 13 where they have them in network, and Ameritas does not. And then there's nine that are completely out of network for both. Remember, though, the out-of-network experience is very different between people who are with Delta today and people who would be with Ameritas.
In addition, Delta, a lot of the in-network providers are not taking new patients. So any of our new employees, even though there's providers here, they can't get into that dentist because there's so few dentists. And switching to Ameritas allows that 90% of usual and customary. So you're spending your money more wisely, and you can go to any dentist.
Yeah. Yeah, and then the last piece to that is that Ameritas will make a commitment to the county to try to recruit those top providers. They'll make a really concerted effort to get out there, recruit the providers. But while they're out there, they can also educate them about the processes that they have, that they'll pay upfront, that employees don't have to pay, how to submit claims. So they're going to come out and actually meet with all the dentists and make an effort to get them in the network. And the last thing I would mention is that some of your neighbors, so Humboldt County changed to Ameritas last year. So they're already doing some of that legwork to get the more providers in network. There's some school districts in kind of Sonoma up to Lake County who have changed. So the more, you know, as the momentum grows, hopefully there will be more network dentists. But in the meantime, the experience for those going out of network should be very different. So that concludes our presentation, but we'd be happy to take any questions that any of you have.
And I do need to point out, there was a slight typo in my memo. We listed it as 0.9, and it's .9. And 0.3, and it's .3. And that was corrected, but I did want to point that out.
Say that again?
So.
Does it sound like, to me, like you said the same thing?
No, it's a zero difference. So .09% was presented, and it's actually .9%. Which was corrected before the memo went out.
But I just wanted to make sure that I pointed that out.
Thank you very much. I want to ask Supervisor Simon if he had anything else to add. I know you were involved in these conversations.
Yeah, absolutely. I did miss the last conversation I was having. I was traveling on that date. But, you know, the information given, you said it the best. Making a big, large change like this, changing cards and other things, is always a challenge. But looking at the costs, looking at the opportunities, I think the committee does a great job of asking the questions, bringing up what's happening in their families all the time, what the experiences are. And I think they've made the right decision or the recommendation today. I do know that, I can only speak on behalf of one tribal organization, but I know there are current businesses that do use Ameritas here in Lake County and others. So, you know, I think the changes will be a positive thing that will be done. But I think the conversations that happened there at the committee hearings or the committee meetings are really important to help us move forward with this, so.
And I think we're really looking forward, from an HR perspective, of having that navigator to help us explore our benefits, help our employees use the benefits that we purchase for them in a more beneficial way to them and their families. I know, just being in this rural area, I was traveling back to the Bay Area to see a doctor. That became painful. But I moved here seven years ago. I've had nine providers. That's huge, and that's a huge resource. It's probably easier for me to go out because I know benefits than it is our average employee. So this puts an expert in their pocket, in their phone, to help them utilize these benefits in a more beneficial way.
What we've seen with Accolade, they have a chart that's pretty interesting. And it goes from how much health insurance spending happened by person, 10,000, 20, 50, 80, 100,000. The more amount of money someone is spending in claims, 85% of the people who are in the $100,000 range are working with Accolade. So the more problems they have, the more care they need, the more people, more of those people use Accolade. And we showed that slide to the committee. I mean, we were very conscious that it kind of flips that, you know, that statement that, well, it's not personal, it's just business. Well, health insurance is personal. And what we're trying to do with Accolade is make it more better personal care than the traditional arrangement.
Supervisor Green?
Thank you for the presentation. Several questions, and they're going to sound critical, and they're not meant to be. But I'm glad to hear the claim was going to be so much user-friendly. Everything I've seen so far doesn't convince me of that. So I want to turn to page six of the slide deck. My first question is that there would be no change in core coverage from our existing coverage. But our existing coverage has a matrix of a PPO 80, PPO 35, some with health savings accounts, one specific to law enforcement. And I see Delta has the same matrix. Under this proposed new plan, are we going to have just one size fits all for all types of employee classes?
No, the plan's, the plan designed, so you'd still have all the same five plans, no copay changes, no deductible changes. So there'd be a direct map from one plan. So if you're in the PPO 80 now, you would still be in a PPO 80. It would just be through Blue Shield, for example. So you still would have all five plans.
Because those plans are called out in our MOUs, they've been negotiated. And that's my second question, is aren't we hovering dangerously close to negotiating a change in benefits, applying not just to represented employees but management? This is a county-wide change being proposed.
The unions were a part of the benefit committee. Every union was represented on the committee. So they took it to their people as well. And as a committee, we voted as a whole to make this change. So we are not in jeopardy of negotiating.
And also, I wanted to point out that we're not changing the structure of the benefit. We're just changing the carrier. So, like, changing, like, film plans, for instance. We're not going for AT&amp;T.
I may beg to differ. So you didn't get into slide 22 and 23 in the slide deck in the appendix. But I see a heavy focus on virtual care. So goodie, Accolade will offer $0 virtual primary care, $0 virtual mental health care. I am in the same boat, you are. I can't keep a primary care provider, much less a specialist, in county. So for the young kids and the millennials and the crowd, maybe the app and all this mental health assistant. I assume it's a live person, not ChatGPT, but I don't know that.
It's a live person.
Coverage amounts aside, I want to know that the modality is not changing. And it seems to me that what you're presenting here is a change in modality, that it's all app all the time upfront.
No, sir. It's in, this is on top of the traditional benefit delivered through Blue Shield and just the same way Anthem does. So the doc, if nobody ever used Accolade, after changing to Blue Shield, they would have the same benefits that they have on their Anthem.
So you still have the ability to see, go see a doctor and pay your $20 copay or go into the doctor for your, like, routine physical? But in addition, to your point, for the 20, 30, 40-year-olds, even me, who want to go see, who want to use the phone or an app, that's an additional option I have. So it just expands access versus taking anything away. So it's just building on what you already have, if that makes sense.
All right. I'm still the new kid on the black as I lame duck out of here, and I don't have any real knowledge of the benefits committee or how it's been used. So I'm going to defer to my colleagues on how this isn't a negotiation. But those are my questions right now.
Great questions. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Any other questions or comments? So I will, I'm slightly concerned about some of the lack of information because it says most providers will be covered. And that most doesn't necessarily lead me to understand, is it 90 out of 100? I mean, I know you had the percentages in there. But out of the ones that our county employees are accessing now that you might have access to understand where they're going right now based on the claims that you're seeing, what does most mean? Because some of it drops a certain percentage, and some of it climbs. Mostly on the ancillary, it seems to go up, but on the primary care provider, it goes down. And I guess I should disclose, I'm not speaking on the behalf of our local hospital chains, but I am concerned on the kind of potential movement towards more virtual care. We're seeing absolute vacant areas, deserts in the state of California and many rural areas outside of California where there's no longer a hospital. And if we all start going towards Accolade and other virtual networks, how are we keeping our local hospitals engaged with us and continuing to remain here? I can't, I don't want to speak for them, I don't want to work for them. But at the same time, I have those concerns because they're already struggling in certain aspects. In certain aspects, they're doing great. But it's just something that I keep in mind. And you're saying, I guess there's one part, and please just know I have a certain angst against healthcare in general. Used to work in the healthcare realm, but I'm also a diabetic. And healthcare is a business.
Big money business.
It is absolutely a business. It impacts persons, but it is a business. The fact that you just told us that 450,000 persons are about to join Blue Cross and that we're about to do the exact same amount as we go to Blue Shield kills me. That Blue Shield is not offering a better package than what we're already getting from Blue Cross. Maybe we need to wait for that transition to happen before that drop in the amount of the benefit package costs. But it just kills me that 450,000 people in the state of California are about to transition, and Blue Shield is going to stick with the same cost for the same benefit that Blue Cross is currently offering us, so.
And I do want to say that this isn't a switch to virtual. It just adds a virtual element to it for those that want to use that.
There's bonuses where you're not paying a copay if you go to virtual versus if you go to the hospital. You can access them wherever you are. Some people are going to need that here because maybe they're not mobile. Maybe they're bed bound, maybe they need access. So I think it's a good thing to have. But I do worry about as we get the Amazon of healthcare, that our local providers will only become less and less of a provider to the community. And I can't control that. It's just my concern.
Sure.
That it's only going to get more difficult. I do have a question for you, and I apologize if it's a little bit in left field, but it's related to healthcare. Costs are high in Lake County in comparison to some other places. And part of that reason is we only have critical access hospitals and not general access hospitals. Do you know what the cost difference of our benefit package would be if we put a larger effort in trying to organize to get general access hospital here in Lake County versus what it is currently? Have you ever looked into that?
As in asking another hospital to build a facility here?
Something along those lines. Or a joint effort between the ones that are already here?
Well, I, no, we haven't looked into that. That's pretty much kind of beyond the scope of what our expertise is. We work with a lot of rural counties. Tulare County had a hospital close. And mostly, the biggest challenge that the rural hospitals are having is that so many of the patients are on Medi-Cal. And Medi-Cal pays so much less than private health insurance does, and Medicare does the same thing. So that is more, if there's, the bigger challenge is really what goes on with the publicly funded programs, where the private programs have to charge a lot more. There's 6,000 hospitals in the country, and they all take Medicare. And they all lose about 40% per patient on Medicare. And they have to charge 45% more per patient not on Medicare to have a 5% margin. That's how, that's how it works across the country. And it's particularly acute in rural areas of California and others. Central Valley has the same, similar kinds of deserts. Calaveras County, we're having the same conversation. They're kind of like you guys, they're east of Stockton. You're close to Santa Rosa. They have the same kind of thing. There's not great access in the county. And we're having the same conversation about can't, virtual is not intended to replace face-to-face care. It's intended to add to it, to supplement it. It is not a replacement for the doctor having hands-on experience with a patient and checking their health. So, and we're not presenting it that way. We're not trying to offer it that way. We're trying to do what we can to make up for the lack of access of physical care.
Yeah, and one thing I could add to, or offer to add to what Tom's saying is, you know, the, what I'm hearing from Pam and the employees is there, there isn't doc, you can't get in to see a doctor, so they're full, right? So this just provides some other options so that those, those already, you know, those doctor's offices that can't accept patients, there is another way for somebody to get care. And in terms of the hospital, those acute things are still going to be done at a hospital. Really what the virtual provides is mental health care, primary type care, you know, urgent help. But the meat and potatoes of a hospital is going to remain because there's no replacement for that, right?
Yeah, I suspect in the post-Amero, we've all maybe had a virtual healthcare visit. The function of a virtual care provider. Mike, please. Is to treat something.
You can speak in the microphone.
That is reasonably managed virtually. And if you have, I've had the experience where I would get to a certain point and said, doctors say, nope, go to the ER. Nope, this is my limit. I'm not, here's what you can consider, but you need to go get a face-to-face appointment.
Supervisor.
Well, I don't know about your families, but everybody in my family gets sick at 4 o'clock on a Friday. And there's not a single on-call doctor in the county. And so I have to go and use Teladoc and figure all these other options out so that I don't have to spend my weekend in the ER for $3,000, which is pretty much the only thing that happens in my house.
Exactly. The emergency room visit to replace healthcare cost us a fortune, and this replaces that. I've had bronchitis enough times, but trying to call in to get in to my provider, they can see me in three weeks. Okay, I'm coughing out a lung. I know what this is. I just need a prescription and some cough medicine. This can be done over the phone, or a renewal for my thyroid medicine. I don't need to go in to see somebody because that's, it's a maintenance medication. This just helps our employees utilize the services in a more effective way, in a more time-management way for them, if they can. It won't place preventative. You still need, at a certain age, to go in for your mammogram and your care visits. It just also helps you find a provider. If you can't find one locally, what's the closest provider to me? So that I don't have to take a day off to go to the doctors.
So collectively, then, if this is going to be lowering those ER visits, when then we'll see that benefit in the future?
Yes, that could help. Yes, it could help that way.
So I think the most important thing is rates stay the same.
Yes, sir.
Whether we do the change or not. Out-of-pocket stays the same. Copay stays the same. My last question, which is something that hasn't been touched on, I think I know the answer, but I want to ask it nonetheless. We have folks who reach a high enough position here in Lake County that when they retire, we continue to provide them a level of healthcare until they're 65. How will this affect them? Or is it the exact same impact that would occur to our employees?
Exact same impact as our employees.
So a slight decrease in primary care provider, but an increase in the ancillary and other things like. and other things like that, just as we saw in the percentages. Okay. Yeah, I wish we could lower the price. But I don't think we're going to win that battle. And I appreciate that there's no increase, and that this does, especially for the dental, provide some better access, even though it is more limited in who does support Emeritus, it allows for the non-network folks to still have better access than the ones currently through Delta that we have now. So I don't see anything that's a red flag to me, and I appreciate the conversation. Anything further from anyone else? Let's open it up for the public. Nobody on Zoom. We have a empty chamber. Did you want to say something else before we took action? Okay, bringing it back to the board for action.
I move that we approve medical carrier change from Anthem Blue Cross to Blue Shield with the PPO Navigator.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Did you want to do it?
Oh, I'll do. I move to approve dental carrier change from Delta Dental to Emeritus. Emeritus.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our last open session item is our calendars. Supervisor Green, would you like to start us off?
I'm in the wrong month. Oops, and I went too far. Tonight, I'll be going to Bigport Fire Protection District. Sunday, I don't have the times, but in Scotch Valley, we'll have our Neighbor Fest. And that was a really good shindig last year, and I expect this year's to be bigger and better. I do believe it's in the afternoon at that ranch on the straightaway whose name I'm forgetting. Next Tuesday, City Council and might have a shelter update meeting. But that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Simon?
Finish up the board meeting. Finish up the board meeting today, and then LTA and APC was canceled for tomorrow. Have math meeting on Thursday, meeting with CAO on Friday. And then on Monday, have the Risk Reduction Authority meeting. That's in the city of Clear Lake, I think is where that is. So at three PM, we'll be doing that on Monday and then back here on Tuesday.
Thank you. Supervisor Pyska?
Tomorrow morning, I'll be having a meeting with Vice Chair Crandall in Upper Lake. And then I have my NACO meeting, and there is a Umarini meeting I'm not sure I'll be able to get to. And then in the evening, I have the B-Vac meeting. On the eleventh, I have a Fire Safety Council meeting I'm not sure I'm going to be able to get to. On the twelve, on Friday, I'll be in Sacramento for the Wildfire Task Force meeting. And I'm going to have to miss the hazardous vegetation meeting for the benefit zones. On Saturday is the Buckingham Annual Meeting, but I think I'm going to have to miss that. I have to someone up from camp. And then Monday, meeting with CAO Parker and RRA in the afternoon.
Thank you. Vice Chair Crandall?
Yes, I wanted to first report out last week, Tuesday and Wednesday, when I was in Sacramento testifying or whatever you want to call it with RCRC for AB two-five-five-seven and SB eight-twenty, also four ninety-one, four ninety-one. AB four ninety-one was not brought forward. SB eight-twenty kept getting changed, so I wasn't able to be there, although it did pass, and that's what we were trying to do. We were trying to support that. SB eight-twenty adapts the same asset forfeiture provisions currently applicable to unlicensed manufacturing of alcohol beverages, moonshining, but it now does it with commercial cannabis that's illegal. So that's that's moving forward. There's also, so four ninety-one, it's it's not even been brought forward, and it has to do with illegal cannabis as well. Two-five-five-seven passed. We were opposed to it. What it does is it limits the the work that counties do and conduct with nonprofits. As you know, we are a small rural county, along with all other rural counties, and RCRC heavily rely on the partnerships with local businesses, nonprofits and whatnot. The folks in the room that oppose this, there were quite a bit. It still passed. It was real close. It was a three-two. But at the same time, you know, we had to, you know, make our stand. And I was hoping that I can get through it. I realize now that I read too slow. I have to read really fast like the others. But I don't know if it would have made a difference, but it was good to see at least there was a three-two. But anyhow, so that's that's where I went last week with RCRC. Tomorrow, we have a meeting in Upper Lake, Supervisor Pyska and myself. Then I have the, I think it's, yes, tomorrow also, I have an AR six-three-three-zero Meadow Point. And that has to do with, it's been ongoing when it comes to like the, there's a water situation in Upper Lake that's been going on for some time, and it's reinvigorating. And so it has to do with the park that's in Upper Lake that's had a situation for, I guess it was, I would say years and years that's been going on. But anyhow, moving forward, so I'll be going on that just to monitor. I'm not here or there. What's gonna, I'm not going to make a difference in what happens. I'm just there to monitor and see what I can do to help if there's something I can help with, if that makes any sense. So the agency's working on that with the community. Friday, let's see, Thursday, I also have the Farm Ranch Rural EPA Committee. I have that meeting that day. Friday, I'm meeting in Cern, Nice, and Clear Lake Oaks. So I'll be doing quite a bit with some folks in my district. Monday, CAO meeting, and I know I have something else, but I'm going to look right on my calendar itself. No, no, I, so far, it's Susan. And then I do know, I know I have to do something with Sam soon. We're supposed to do an interview. So I think that's the day, but I don't know what to touch base with him on that. But anyhow, back here next Tuesday, the Board of Supervisors meeting. Oh, also, the eleventh is the Summer Clean Water Management Council. Are you, you're doing that, though? I'm the alternate, right, on that?
Yeah.
Okay, making sure.
That's next week, you said?
Is that, that's the eleventh, right? That's this week?
So I will not be able to do that this week for the fact that I'm flying into Tampa on Thursday.
Want me to do it?
If it's possible.
Yeah. All right. Well, I got it on there. So.
Thank you. So my schedule is pretty much blank because LTA was canceled. I am meeting with a few folks tomorrow to catch up for the time away that I, for the time that I was away. But we'll be leaving on Thursday to go to Tampa for the NACO conference. And I will be there through Monday, the fifteenth, and coming back. So that means no meeting with CAO Parker. But I will be back here on Tuesday, the sixteenth. We are going to find out, I know I asked to be a vice chair on one of the committees for NACO. I'll find out there. And we'll also find out who was elected into the positions as our supervisor next door in Sonoma County was hoping to get into vice chair one, I think, because he's vice, second vice chair right now. And I think he's moving up to vice.
He's getting sworn in as president.
Is he? So I missed that part. He's getting moved up. Yes, right.
To go to that party.
Yeah. Which is why I talked to him about getting as a vice chair on the committee. So I will be back on Tuesday, and that is my calendar. I think we did not miss anything else. We will go in into closed session. We have three items: Public Employee Appointment pursuant to Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-seven-B one, Appointment of Interim Special District Administrator, eight-point-two, Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release, eight-point-three, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-six-point-nine-D one, FERC Project number seventy-seven, Potter Valley Hydroelectric Project. And with that, we are going into closed session. All right. Good afternoon. We are back from our closed session, and we are, we do have some action to be taken from item eight-point-one. Vice Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Susan Parker as Interim Special District Administrator effective June twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four through July seventh, twenty-twenty-four. That is July seventh, twenty-twenty-four.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. And with that, we will have a good evening. See you next week.